Mr. Fraser?
Here.
Mr. Seymour?
Yes.
Mr. Skyler?
Here.
Mr. Hermann?
Here.
Mr. Dampf, Mr. North?
Here.
Is there a six number?
It's all stamped with the person you mean.
Let the nation declare that we are the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation, united in its manifold, with thirty million judges for our law.
Right, we have no presentation, no statement, and we're going to approve the amendment on the ground chair.
We'll discuss the meeting of July 14th. We've made the whole meeting of July 14th. We've made the whole meeting of July 21st. The regular meeting of July 21st. And we've made the whole meeting of August 11th.
Yeah, motion by Mr. Fercotti, ordered by Mr. Fraser, to approve the meeting, uh, and noted. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Motion is here. We'll move to the second agenda item. Uh, if there are any items on the counter, any items on the counter that you like to have reviewed. If not, we'll forward our consent agenda item. Consent agenda item A, just authorization to purchase replacement bottles for the fire department, self-impotent breathing apparatus system, and the amount of thirty thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars from Combi, from the company Troy, Michigan. Consent agenda item B, we see a bill from credit, two thousand fourteen, thousand sixteen, annual court calendar for the community, permanent review relations of evidence. The acceptable will be twenty-three thousand seven hundred and thirty-seven dollars and ninety-five cents from the Cutwell of Taylor, Michigan. Consent agenda item C is the Southfield, Michigan Works Partnership Accountability Training Home Grant, that's in the amount of three hundred and forty-one thousand seven dollars between the city of Southfield and Michigan work, HCS Open County. Consent agenda item D is Southfield, Michigan Works, drag and test center, grant acceptance in the amount of twenty-one thousand four hundred and two hundred and fifty-eight dollars in city of Southfield, Michigan work, and then covering the period of July 1st, two thousand fourteen through June 30th, two thousand fifteen. Consent agenda item E is about Southfield, Michigan Works, the World Force, Act, where it's accepted in the amount of four hundred and one hundred and forty-four thousand two hundred and eighty-two dollars between the city of Southfield Center and Michigan work, HCS Open County, Michigan. Royden Grant covering the period of July 1st, two thousand fourteen through June 30th, two thousand fifteen. Do you have a question? Um, Mr. Seymour?
I'm a pro of consent agenda item A, we need to be even in.
To board.
There's a motion by Mr. Seymour, ordered by Mr. Fraser, to approve our consent agenda item. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any vote? Motion carried. We have one public hearing in the evening, and we'll turn that over to you, Mr. Seymour.
Thank you, Madam President. Our, our public hearing is GP 1270, a special use request of Marion Valdo. On behalf of the owner, Taylor Deco, to establish a group childcare home for the care of more than six, but no more than twelve minor children, on a property located at 28725 Everett Street, on the west side of Everett Street between San Rosa and West 12 Mile Road. Planning Department received an application for site, uh, for special land use on August 1st. Planning Commission called the public hearing their recommendation on September 17th. I have a brief video.
GP 1270, a special use request of Southland Deco to allow a group childcare home. Our property is located at 28725 Everett Street, on the west side of Everett Street between 12 Mile Road and San Rosa Boulevard, in section thirteen of the city. The subject property, as well as the properties to the north, south, east across Everett Street and west, are a single-family residential. The subject property is located within the Frederick B. Graves Southfield Wood Subdivision, and is located between two single-family homes, both fronting Everett Street. The site contains point one acre land with four feet of drainage on Everett Street, in the depth of one hundred and twelve point zero one feet. The special use request proposes to use a existing home in the group childcare home within the single-family residential zoning district. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the special use work standard the conditions of Article Five, Single Family Residential District, as they relate to group childcare homes.
We've got to restart that, because it's a show. I was just suggesting.
GP 1270, a special use request of Southland Deco to allow a group childcare home. Our property is located at 28725 Everett Street, on the west side of Everett Street between 12 Mile Road and San Rosa Boulevard, in section thirteen of the city. The subject property, as well as the properties to the north, south, east across Everett Street and west, are a single-family residential. The subject property is located within the Frederick B. Graves Southfield Wood Subdivision, and is located between two single-family homes, both fronting Everett Street. The site contains point one acre land with four feet of drainage on Everett Street, in the depth of one hundred and twelve point zero one feet. The special use request proposes to use the existing home in the group childcare home within the single-family residential zoning district. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the special use work standard the conditions of Article Five, Single Family Residential District, as they relate to group childcare homes. The proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan, noting moderate density, single family, for the parcel. The petitioners did implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security.
Through the chair, the applicant has an existing family daycare in this home, which allows her, it would mean to have children up to six, and she's requesting a group childcare home, which would increase the number of children, more than six, but no more than twelve minor children. The applicant is here to give any questions.
If they would like to call it at the time. Do you have any comments you can add? Give me a share of the name and address, will that be good?
Um, my name is Vivian Deco, and the address is 28725 Everett, in Southfield. Um, I spoke to the neighbors the last time we were here outside, and I did, I may have some concerns about trash and, um, traffic. Um, at this time, we consult and advise of at least four trash cans. This time we have six.
Uh, I'm sorry. We have six.
I'm sorry. Um, and, uh, I've talked to all the parents to be considered, the neighbors. Um, and I have had no issues with the neighbors.
Okay, this is a public hearing, so we're here to the public, and then after that the council will ask a question then. That's the thing. Okay, this is a public hearing, and we'll open the audience to those people that would speak directly to the item, and you've got three minutes to address the council.
Pamela Gerald, PO Box 165, Southfield, Michigan 48037-0155. My telephone number is 248-346-0439. Um, she basically just said, um, my concern about the number of trash bins, talking to the people on that street, and just knowing that she has all of her credentials, and she's only increasing over six, um, I'm really pleased about that, and this is definitely something to support. I just want to make sure that she's going to adhere to the site security recommendations by the Southfield Police, and also, um, maybe she could talk to, uh, the fire chief about some fire safety precautions at the house, maybe all of the workers, knowing CPR, I'm sure that's already required, and just having like fire extinguishers and other things like that to keep the children safe, and these types of places are in need, they're going to be licensed and bona fide, and it's always good to have some kind of curriculum for kids, even if they're little kids. Uh, education cannot be stressed enough in places like this. I'm in support of this. Thank you.
Is anyone else in the room to get back to the council? Right. State now will declare the public hearing closed. Any questions?
Yes, I, I don't recall us ever doing more than, I think normally more than six children in a daycare. Mr. Fercotti, who investigated that, or are you a senior?
Yeah, through the chair, um, the state regulates and permits by right, family daycare, which allows up to six children in a single-family home. As you recall, about two years ago, the council amended the ordinance to allow special land use for group childcare home, which is six to twelve. So the maximum number of children would be twelve, and I believe this is the fourth home day, uh, home group care that the council's seen in the last two years.
All right, and do we have any that have been on six?
There's three, uh, three previous ones that was approved by council.
So what number of children?
Up to twelve.
And then if they can have up to twelve, and weren't those, um, sites that had more land around them?
Uh, these.
Uh, there was one on Nine Mile, and it had a double lot?
Through the chair, we have a minimum requirement of open spaces required for a child, child that has to be fenced in, all of them meet that requirement, as well as this one. We have a minimum square footage per child of indoor play activity, which this also meets, and there's some additional standards that are above and beyond what the state requirements are. So this is in compliance with our ordinance, as well as the state requirement for group childcare home.
I'm concerned about having twelve children in some place, a home on either side, I just, I, I can't imagine that we allow that, and, uh, you know, these homes are close to each other. I remember the last one, I believe, we approved, had a double lot, and I'm concerned about that.
Yes, um, the, um, the rear exit, the basement exit, uh, how many employees you have if you have twelve children in that facility?
The state's rule is, um, one adult per six children. Right now, we have six children, what were you, excuse me, two adults?
So you would have two if you had twelve.
And I would have more than two.
Okay, the, um, and, and, Mr. Cherry, um, I'm looking at this question, what are the ages of the children?
Uh, children are from two months to five years, four to five years.
Cherry, this question to you. Shows on the second drawing, the exit from the basement, where most of the children will be in the playroom. Appears to be an emergency, uh, are there steps? I've seen a picture showing that exterior, but in the interior, are there steps going out to that? It doesn't look like it's got enough depth, it's almost like a ladder level.
I know there's a second egress window, and I, I'll ask the applicant to address how, how you just get out that second egress window.
Um, we have a, an egress window on the outside, there are steps to climb up, and the inside, we have a stool, uh, that sits right underneath the window. The state does not require it, because it's low enough, and the children need our assistance to, um, get them out, but we still have one there, um, right underneath the window, and from the inside.
I am concerned, I'm not concerned about the use that you have, I'm concerned about the age of the child, if there should be a, a situation in the basement, and then if there'd be one person in the basement, there should be supervision, how would they get that many children, say that six children, that one that's two months old, out, out of that basement, um, and would that could be getting out still, that's for sure? And, and, um, I just want to make sure that, that there's an ability there to get out to that basement. That's gotta be a beast, uh, that eight foot ceiling, Cherry, in the basement?
Yes, sir, yes.
So you're going on a straight up eight feet? And, and I, I just, I'm concerned, I just, um, don't like these, uh, these basement exits, homes for not built for that use, and, um, I don't, I, I mind it. And there's no way, one person could get out if you had three, three, uh, two month old babies down there, if you had an emergency, you could get them out in a reasonable amount of time, and, and that really bothers, um, the man. How you open, possibly get out, but I'm worried about the young, the young ones, because they, uh, according to the plan I have, this, I just have a sketch, and it indicates playroom, kitchen, nap room, especially the nap room is, is down the basement also.
Yes.
Um, do you find the company went to that very close?
Well, it's part of the page. Through the chair, um, again, this is regulated by the state, which requires them to meet the fire and, and building requirements for, for this type of use. So, in essence, the fire department will look at this. They.
They have it already?
Well, they, they did a review.
They did.
They did a review as part of, part of our internal review, but I don't know if they physically have gone out to see the site. They did review the application, that's part of our review process.
The reason I raise that is, you know, we own the, the city owns those apartments, uh, from Franklin Road, I think thirteen units there. There are people who were, uh, had a bedroom in the basement, and they did not have, they had just the room, the basement windows, and, and they were, so they had to be a much larger exit than, than what is indicated here. And that is.
This is, this is two means of egress.
Sorry?
There, there are two means of egress. There's a stair that is an exit, and then window is a secondary egress. So the window is not the only exit egressed out of the basement.
What is done on the main floor? What uses are on the main floor?
Well, children, daycare children do not use the first, the main floor. The main floor is strictly for us. Children use downstairs only.
So you're gonna have twelve children down in the basement, and a napping room down in the basement, and you're gonna have a maximum of twelve children, and we're talking about two months old?
Well, okay, children.
How many two month old babies would you have? I mean, you're experiencing with six now, right?
Yeah, we have one.
You have one?
Yes. The state also, uh, allows two children, two infants under the age of eighteen months for an adult. Two infants under the age of eighteen months for an adult.
Now, I, I'm not, of course, a user, I just can't see the nap room and twelve children down the basement without the power, ability to get out of there in case of first, first is out of the basement also.
Yes, it is.
There's a twenty rooms on the basement.
Now, for right now, we have to, it's required, I think, that we do fire drills and tornado drills. In the, in the spring, we do the tornado, uh, in the year.
What kind of steps do you have on the, the rear exit?
I'm sorry?
What kind of steps do you have on the?
They come with the egress, um, uh, the, the whole, the, the window is also attached to the outside, where it's like a well, and it's got, um, attached steps. Now, when we do the drill, there's always one adult that steps out of the window, and the other adult is inside. Now, this is for only six children. The older ones can, you know, the children would know where, what corner to go if there is a problem.
So, so the well is, is, once they get to a certain point, it, it's getting to great level, they have to jump out?
No, 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 there's steps all the way up.
All the way up?
Yes, yes, there's steps all the way up. And I believe it's even higher.
How does the water, how does the water drain?
There's a drain.
Is, is there, um?
No cover.
No cover?
No, but there's a drain that goes to the, um, onto.
Is there a landing in, in between the tunnel and the water?
No, no, there's a, um, deep ground and a drain hole. That's covered.
Any more questions? Uh, Mr. Hermann?
Yeah, I, I, I wanna help maybe, uh, give you the opportunity to alleviate some of Mr. Seymour and Mr. Fercotti's concerns. We had probably about, two years ago, Mr. Fercott, on Autumn Lane and Rock Creek, there was another very similar one, moving from the one to six children, or one to five children on the premises, to the six to twelve. And I mentioned at the time, I have a, a friend in Bloomfield Township that went through that same exact process two years ago in Bloomfield Township, and it's not just the city that has certain steps, or the township that has certain steps, there are state requirements, uh, that, uh, permit somebody to graduate from the one to five children and the six to twelve, including you have to hire one more staff person on the premises when you have, that's double the amount of kids, if that's correct, right?
Exactly, exactly.
So, so there's more staff on site. And I, my friend does the same thing out of her home in Bloomfield Township, there has to be a fire evacuation plan posted above the doors, there has to be a sign that says exit. Um, can you walk us through, what other things do you have to do in your home to keep it compliant, not just with the city, but with the state?
We have to have an exit sign, um, we have an exit sign on Hill and Hill, and we also have an exit sign right above this, that's glowing pop, uh, to the side door. Um, like I said, we, we do fire drills once a month, we do tornado drills only in the spring and summer. Um, we have, uh, fair question, Mr. Englisher, we have a whistle, uh, that alerts all the kids, and, uh, the, the children, the, the older children, three to five, you know, have to, you know, go up the steps, standing up corners, and the younger ones, like I said, we, right now, we only have six, so one is inside, one is outside of the window, and, you know, the fire drill is.
Yeah, and even in, in your backyard, you have to have a fenced in area, you know, and, and, so I, I've seen firsthand what my friend has gone through in Bloomfield, and, and really, you know, the reason that we have, you know, these city regulations, um, is to just determine how we're gonna proceed forward on the city level. Well, we've already approved three of these, uh, throughout Southfield, um, and it's really the state that has the strict stringent, uh, protocol of can these licenses be issued, and then the city really plays a different type of role. We've already played that role in, in approving three others, and I hear, uh, Mr. Fercotti's concerns, but I know that there are certain steps you even have to take in your small business, your household, uh, in order to get to that level, otherwise the state wouldn't have issued a license.
Exactly, and the state, the license has to be renewed every two years, so we have to go through all the training.
Right.
Um, and they, they come and inspect the facilities, not only every two years, but they cannot find our door at any time.
Right, 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 yeah.
And this has happened, and, you know, everything has been fine.
So I, I'm at a spot where I'm, I'm comfortable, uh, giving, uh, the approval from the city, uh, smooth, uh, the applicant forward.
Mr. Skyler?
Um, this is Deco, uh, Sammy, now?
Yes.
Yeah, uh, good evening. Um, how long have you had a daycare in your home?
This, this location, um, it's been one year.
One year.
Yes.
So obviously they have it, you were approved by the state of Michigan, and they've been out here, and they've approved your, um, fire procedures and, and fire exit. Uh, I mean, I'm, I'm looking at a picture he provided, I assume that this window well is, uh, to step out?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Um, we also, um, I've been reading the town commission minutes, uh, there were two concerns from the people that spoke, um, that, um, I saw. One was, uh, traffic. Now, I, I have a, um, a daycare right around the corner from me that has twelve children. Um, the, the traffic is inconsequential, the parents drop the kids off and leave, pick the kids up and leave. Sometimes siblings, you know, you know, it's not a issue whatsoever, um, it's like any other traffic on the street. Um, the other concern, uh, was, um, about trash, and I had a little difficult, I thought you addressed it, but, uh, I had a little difficulty hearing what you said, so would you mind repeating that?
Oh, no, sure. Um, neighbors were concerned about trash, and the last meeting, they said that the, uh, planning or commissioner asked, we should have at least four trash cans on the premises.
Stop calling out the car, people.
Yes, we didn't have a problem, but, you know what, right now, we have six, just in case there's a Halloween party or, uh, extra trash, if you grant the license, we'll have more here, so we have six. Four are outside of the, two are inside, just in case we need more, um, trash cans. So, um, that's one. And two, I, I've talked to all the parents, um, I, I can check the time in law, because the state requires for every parent to come down, sign, time they drop them in, and time to, um, to come up. Um, there's at least five minutes between, if not more, uh, between, uh, parents. In the morning, most of the parents just drop off, and it's required for them to sign. If their child's requiring, really, when they come back in the, in the afternoon, maybe it takes a few more minutes to let them know how their child did, if there was an issue, if there was, um, a problem. So, and I, I've talked to all the parents, to be considered of the neighbors, um, and, you know, if, if they could, we don't have parents coming in at the same time right now, but if the license is granted to twelve, then I will definitely, if I see two or three parents coming in at the same time, I would definitely be.
Well, I, well, again, that's intermittent, um, and my, my real concern, um, again, I'm experiencing it several times in the city, but, um, uh, the issue of the trash, I'm glad to hear you have the trash cans. Uh, what I was hoping to hear you say is that if, um, something would fall out of the car from one of your parents, that you would be responsible, you or people on you that work for you would be responsible for keeping the streets clean?
I would definitely do that.
Uh, that's what I was hoping to hear. Not just about trash cans, it's about being sure stuff's picked up in part of the property.
Well, that's, you know, that's not just a regular basis, I mean, you know, we go out, we.
I, I, I'm, I'm satisfied with that. I would also just point out to, um, the council that, uh, we have more than four, uh, group homes or, uh, the daycares with twelve children. Uh, when we approved this ordinance, um, the, uh, those, uh, childcare centers with, um, uh... Uh, when we approved this ordinance, um, the, uh, those, uh, childcare centers with, um, uh, six to twelve were for grandfathers. Uh, I know that the one right around the corner from me, uh, has been there for years, um, it was not subject to our new ordinance. Um, and I, I happen to know Ms. Audrey, who runs the home right around the corner. And, um, uh, I drive by her house all the time, and, and again, people come and go, and if it wasn't out, you have to get your children out, all that. It's really minimal, uh, like any other activity on the street. Uh, so, um, I'm, uh, sure that, uh, you're a businesswoman, uh, you know, uh, what it takes to, uh, operate a good home, and you know that the state is on you. And second, if you, uh, uh, vary from, uh, you could lose your license, put yourself out of the business, I don't think you want to do that. Uh, so, uh, I'm very comfortable with your opinion.
With the chair, I can just, um, also add that since this is a special anus, we have, um, some enforcement opportunities. And as she stated, every two years, you have to be relicensed, and we have to certify that they're compliant. So, we would have a couple of opportunities if things got out of hand, of course.
That's great.
Yes, uh, Stackel. Yeah, good evening. Um, I have just a few questions, I hope you don't feel one. Technically, I'm trying to come up with one. Just wondering for my own education, perhaps there are some folks that are watching and may have some requests. One is, have you ever had, um, twelve children as a responsibility to take care of?
Uh, we have another daycare that's, we're inviting my sister-in-law, we said it, it's eleven o'clock, we have some paratax. Um, it's been for eleven years. And, uh, yes, we, that, that daycare is a group daycare. Because eleven years ago, the, the state issues a family or a group child daycare. So, um, we've been working there for, like you said, the last twelve years, and we've had no issues. So, yes, we have taken care of twelve kids.
Okay, now, your sister-in-law takes care of that one, but how, what kind of, um, do you have in that other one?
I was with her for seven years. Until we moved to, uh, this one.
Okay, so you do have some experience with more than six children?
Yes.
Um, the second question is, are you going to limit the number of two-year-olds or two-month, two-month-old children that you're gonna be taking care of?
The maximum we could take care of is four.
Okay, if you, if you have four, do you intend to have four if, if the, if the, the demand is there?
I'm hoping.
Okay, my question is, how do you have the children? Are they, do they share a crib? Do they all have their own crib, uh?
They all have their own crib. The, uh, children over are in their sleeping cots. So, each one has, uh, their own, and the, uh, parents provide the sheets for them with the names on the, on the sheet. So, no, no child sleeps to, next to another child. They, they're all in separate cots, the children over one year, and the under one year are in a play, uh, in a playpen.
Okay. Um, I was, uh, for a number of years, I was on committee of infants, uh, infant mortality. And there's a, a real concern with how some people put their babies in a crib and the, you know, you talk about sudden crib, crib death. Uh, and I'm sure that you're training that how to safely put a child in a crib so that they don't, uh, smother themselves by... Because their tooth, their muscles aren't strong enough to turn over.
Right. We have to take, we have to take a class for, um, infants. An infant under one year will be in a playpen with no blankets, no, uh, clothes, no sheets, no nothing, so...
Very good. Um, now, another question is, how many steps are there from the basement to the main floor?
I believe nine, I'm not sure, but I believe nine.
Okay, so it's almost a full flight of stairs?
Yeah.
Okay, and when you say that all of your children are, are in the basement, they're not taken care of on the main floor because that's your living room?
Exactly.
Now, when they come in in the morning, they come in on the main floor, you're right away to the...
No, it's a side door, um, side door, uh, of the property that goes, which you open it, three seconds, uh, step through. Yeah, and there's a gate, we have a baby gate that separates, you know, that's, uh, we have it, that separates the kitchen from the landing area where you enter the house from the side door.
So, is that your second egress out of the, uh, out of the basement in case of an emergency? What is the window?
The window is downstairs.
Okay, okay.
When they enter the house, parents that enter the house with a child, they enter through the side door.
Yes.
Not from the front door. When they open the door, there's a staircase going down to the basement. What we've, uh, what I've done is I've put a baby gate.
At the bottom?
No, to separate the kitchen, because when you walk in, you can either go straight to the kitchen or go downstairs. So, children cannot go directly to the kitchen.
Okay.
In the main floor.
Okay, so I'm gonna ask the question again. Since that side door has stairway down to the basement, is that your second egress, your second escape route from the basement?
Yes, yes.
Is it on the same wall as the window well?
No.
Yeah, good, good, okay. Uh, and the last question I have is, um, what kind of training do you require for your employees?
We have to take, um, uh, twenty hours a year training, um, per year. That's besides CPR, uh, for state, uh, foot, uh, for medical treatment, um, and, uh, special class for infants. So, these are the requirements. The, uh, we also have to go through, um, state police clearance, whoever works for the daycare.
And then...
Whoever deals, you know, with the daycare. Um, there's, it's called iChat, that, that's from the, uh, state police. And there's another one, uh, another clearance from the Department of Human Services, uh, any child abuse, um, you have to be cleared before you can even be, we, before we could employ anyone.
Okay, you said I'm ready to answer all my questions, thank you.
Thank you. Um, I'm not concerned about the trash, and I'm not concerned about the traffic outside. I don't think there's, you know, we haven't had any major issues or even minor issues that I know of in the neighborhood. But I am concerned about the children in the basement and the exits. You mentioned signs above fire, like fire exits. Children can't read, they're too young. So, if something happens, but there is not, I mean, Scott said there's gonna be a fire, someone never knows. Is there word of fire? Is someone with them at all times in, in the basement? Are they ever alone?
Never.
Never.
Never, and that's what, as I mentioned, the state requires one adult, one caregiver for six children.
And the six children, one for six?
One for six. At this time, we have six and more, too. Just to be, you know, if one adult wanted to use the bathroom, the children, uh, uh...
And not an emergency, that would be enough.
Well, yes, that's what the state requires, but we, we go, um, and if, we are granted the, uh, group daycare. And once we have the seventh child, so it's gonna be that we're getting an additional help.
And you said you have that, and how many from the younger children, from the two months?
One. One adult for two, one adult for two infants under, um, the age of, uh, eighteen months.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know, I feel uncomfortable about the, um, the exits, I really do. I feel like there were emergencies, I feel uncomfortable about the exits.
The state has to come in after the, um, window was put in and, and just, and even the stool that I have, um...
A what?
The, the, the stool that I have.
Okay.
It's a baby stool that I have underneath the window. The state said, you know, require it because the window sits so low.
Low?
That, you know, a, a four-year-old or a three-year-old can jump out. But we still have it just as a precaution because we have it at the other daycare. So, we brought one here.
And what, and our fire department took this?
No, the state has, um, the state has the, when they come to do the final inspection, after, you know, all the paperwork has been submitted to them. When they come to do the final inspection, they make sure that all the, um, the fire extinguishers there, how, the heat is inspected. And the heat has to be inspected every two years and sent to the state.
What do you mean by heat?
The furnace. Yeah, um, has to be, uh, inspected and certified every two years and sent to the state. So, they go through, we go through all these steps with the state. Um, and if there is anything that I have to do with the fire department, to have a, a certification from them, I would definitely do.
With the chair, I, I just, you know, I was just reading in the comments because this is the second time that's been raised. Um, our fire marshal, um, who's done this, reviewed the application, and his note is that approval is needed from the state fire marshal to be licensed. So, he, he's concurring that the state fire marshal is the ultimate authority, uh, for these types of facilities. But he did review the application.
Well, I understand the mayor, the approval, the license, because I still like to hear that. You know, going next to, I don't know, you've got children, and doors, anything out next to them, you can move. You gotta know the state, and you cannot take a lot of assumptions, but that's not good enough.
Yes, uh, what is in the kitchen and the basement? What, what kind of crap?
Oh, we have a stove surround, uh, my colleague, a refrigerator, and a table.
Is it stowed there?
No, it's stowed.
Are the appliances electric?
Yes.
Where is your, where is your furnace on the, the, in, in, uh, in relation to the kitchen?
In that kitchen, in that same room.
And there's a door on that wooden?
Yeah, oh, yes.
Something should happen in the kitchen or in the stove, in the furnace, uh, the children have to open that door and get out of the actual clear, is that correct?
No, something happens in the kitchen, we wouldn't be leaving. There's two exits, uh, two exits.
One is the stairway that you come in.
Right.
And the other exit, then, is to the rear of the house, is in the kitchen.
Right, but then, the stairway is on the west?
Yeah, I know, I, I have a guy down here. I'm worried about something happening in the basement, and we'll be calling children out of that place, out of one exit, if there's a situation in the kitchen under the first room. Uh, and as far as, uh, you know, uh, the fire marshal, you know, we have charter schools in the city also that we have no control over as far as, as inspections. And, and the state, uh, has those, and there's a lot of those that we would like to, uh, make sure that they be, uh, named different, they be instructed differently, operated in the present count. So, I really don't go too much on what the state does, because they, you know, indicates meaning the state follows them as much as local government does. Uh, they were, yes.
That's right.
Okay, I do have a few questions, uh, in addition to the concern of my colleague. This is a home daycare in a special use, because it's, you may automatically have to prove this specialty disposition and answer for. Looking at the, the planning commission, they were allowed to turn about the traffic. And the residents, basically, Reddick, Frost, Jacob, all of them express concern over the traffic. Um, I have a home daycare on my street, and the traffic in the morning and the evening, it's just, it's, it's children and it's life and the whole traffic is very, very, um, too excessive. And you get a large lot, and those parents drop off, and they speed out, and it's very, very difficult, um, for my neighbors, and they bring them down. Ask, let me, let me ask this question. Where do your children that currently have in your daycare live? Do they live in Southfield or do they live in other communities?
I have one in Arlington, I have, uh, one in Berkeley, I'm sorry, one parent in Berkeley to kids, uh, that come, that attend our daycare. And I have, uh, one on Selkirk, so, so I have one from Wilmington.
One from Wilmington, one from Berkeley.
Yes.
Two from Berkeley.
Yes.
And the other?
Southfield.
Four are Southfield?
I'm sorry?
Yes.
There's, uh, Selkirk and Paratax, we have a child from Selkirk, Paratax. We have two children from Berkeley, and one child from Wilmington.
Exactly, five children at Paratax. Okay. Um, tell me about the, your hours of operation are seven AM to seven PM. So, are all the children picked up by seven AM?
All the children are out here by seven. Um, that's, well, let's talk to each other, but, uh, most of our children are out by six, six thirty if I leave it. But we, we do operations from seven AM till seven PM.
So, they have to be picked up by seven? Now, I just wanted to know if there's some times you call for latchkey, can you elaborate on that a little bit?
Latchkey is, um, our older children, it's the other daycare, um...
Let's talk about this.
Yeah, well, it just, we have children that, um, they go, they're going to school. Sometimes the parents cannot pick them up from school, they get dropped off to the daycare, and then the parent picks them up. When they're older, we don't have latchkey right now, because most of our children are, you know, young and, they're, what I mean, uh, in latchkey. And that's how we slice it, it's with, it's slicing with the state at daycare and, and latchkey. Latchkey is, they can drop them off for two hours, or they can drop them after school, and then pick them up by seven.
So, you're saying you don't have latchkey at this system?
No, no.
Okay, I, I, I have concerns, uh, traffic, the neighbors, and their concerns, um, and the, the density of the neighbors, or, uh, I'm concerned with the traffic. It's close, when you have a smaller home, the traffic gets very, very problematic, I'm sure it is, um, the heat.
Yeah, I'm just looking at this diagram, and I'll tell you what concerns me. The, there's an exit up the steps on the playroom, and the kitchen is likely where, if you're gonna have a fire, it's likely what happened in the kitchen. And the exit is in the kitchen window, so it could be very dangerous. It doesn't make sense to me, it doesn't look like a bad situation. You know, we wanna have an exit from the kitchen, but if the fire, if there were a fire, as it is, you have to go through the kitchen where the fire would be to get to that window, or you can go through the stairs. But I'm, I'm not comfortable with this. I, I think you're asking for, I just think it's not a good situation to increase the number of children, and I feel uncomfortable with that.
Good afternoon. Everybody's spoken, I'll leave you in a ten emotion, and then we'll have a question, bye.
I'll move the, uh, special use, uh, um, support.
Welcome to the day.
We have a motion by Mr. Snyder, supported by Mr. Frazier, which one?
Yeah, you know, I'm, I'm hearing the conversation of council, I'm hearing two distinct concerns, I'm hearing about traffic. Um, nobody came out in the neighborhood tonight to talk about traffic, and it's not like we don't hear about traffic on every single issue that we discuss. In fact, we're about to hear a traffic complaint on bike lane number C tonight, as we're right here, later on in the meeting, as we've heard in the study session. So, I, I gotta take the, the silence from the neighborhood as, you know, approval, but even beyond that, the clinician had said she's talked to her neighbors, uh, in the neighborhood, and has informed them of this, uh, application, and if nobody came out to talk about traffic, you know, we hear about traffic and things where I don't think traffic will be a concern. So, if we're not hearing about traffic as a concern from the neighbors, I definitely don't, you know, I'm not moved to, to take traffic as the reason to deny this woman an opportunity to expand her livelihood. Uh, and, and for us to deny that based on something that I'm not hearing as a concern from the residents, I can't, I can't deny it for that reason. And then the second thing is, is the, the concern about the, you know, fire safety, and, and that's a key concern. I'm, I'm not trying to minimize anybody's, uh... I'm, I'm not trying to minimize anybody's, uh, intentions on council, because it's our job to protect the welfare of every resident in Southfield or every child who's going to, uh, facility like this in Southfield. But on this council in the past, you know, we've been landscape, uh, experts, we've been, you know, traffic experts, we've been site plan experts, this is the first time that I've found out that this council is now fire safety, uh, experts. And I would like to listen to the fire marshal of the city of Southfield when making fire-related, uh, informed decisions. And here we have our fire marshal saying, not only is this acceptable, but we will even yield to the expertise of the state fire marshal. And the state fire marshal, by law, by requirement to get this license, would not issue this license if there was a fire safety issue. But even park that aside, I'm comfortable with, you know, maybe the consensus of council as the petitioner has said, allowing our fire marshal to inspect. She said that here, you know, she has no problem allowing our fire marshal to be eyes on the ground to go through it. So if that's okay with our fire chief who's here tonight and the applicant, I'm comfortable supporting this motion. But even beyond, if you would voluntarily let our fire marshal inspect, or, you know, I don't know what the process would be, I think that goes above and beyond the requirements here. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for this, um, because you'd be very patient, but, you know, this is for lives, but, and I, I totally understand the issues concerning the welfare of our citizens, and for that reason, I yield to the expertise of our fire marshal, and I totally understand the concern of traffic, and for those reasons, I hear the silence of the residents that have come out tonight.
And in all due respect, Mr. Frazier, every council person has an opportunity to put their opinion with regards to what we address, if it's traffic, if safety issue, every council person has an opportunity to articulate that, and so can't say it's not important, even though there are no residents.
Didn't say it wasn't important, in fact, I thought it was important, but...
Yeah, the fact that nobody shows up doesn't mean it's not an issue, because they did show up and they voiced their opposition at the time, which we're in.
Yeah, and let me ask you, um, you say that two different locations, do you live in this home?
No.
Is there anyone living in the home?
Yes, yes.
Should I do that? Um, so are you...
The licensee lives in the home.
The licensee lives in the home?
Lives in the home, is living in the home. I wish you...
You are, so, let me understand, are you the director, but it's not your home, and you're in a leasing place? What, what is your...
No, my daughter is the owner. She lives in the house.
Okay, okay.
My sister is the licensee, lives in the house.
Okay, okay. I want to make sure, because you, now, the other home that you were in, are you still running the daycare?
No, the other home is my sister-in-law, who started the daycare eleven years ago. I worked with her for seven years.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, so now her daycare is moved over to...
No, completely separate, she's still running her business.
Okay, yeah.
All right, we have a motion, by Mr. Cyrus, supported by Mr. Frazier, and then, thank you, to a real public.
Yes.
Mr. Frazier?
Yes.
Mr. Moss?
Yes.
Mr. Seymour?
No.
Mr. Cyrus?
Yes.
Mr. Short?
No.
Um, three, three.
We'll move to the next item, our agenda, site plan, day, which is...
And chair, just, just for clarity, she's already operating, she just doesn't have approval to expand?
No, she's going to expand from the children, twelve children.
Well, she's still not her daycare, she just...
Yeah, she's staying, she operates her children.
Thank you.
That's up through the chair, first site plan is site plan thirteen twenty-three. Site plan review request of Carlo Greco, Durr Systems Inc. on behalf of the owner, DTE Energy, to construct a one hundred and one thousand sixty-eight gross square foot building addition to existing DTE Energy office building for Durr's new North American headquarters located at two six eight zero one Northwestern Highway on the south side of the Northwestern Service Drive between Lassa Road and First Center Drive. Have a brief video presentation, then the applicant is going to do a PowerPoint presentation.
of Durr Systems Incorporated, to construct a one hundred and one thousand sixty-eight gross square foot addition to the existing building located at two six eight zero one Northwestern Highway on the south side of Northwestern Highway between Lassa Road and First Center Drive in section twenty-one of the city. The subject property, as well as the property to the east, is known as E R O, Education Research Office. The property to the north across the M ten, I six ninety-six Northwestern Service Drive driveway is known as O X Office Service. The property to the left is known as E R O M, Education Research Office Limited. The property to the south is known as R M, Multiple Family Low Rise. Regarding the existing conditions on the site, the north side of the existing building is currently green space and parking area. The south side of the building is developed with a parking lot. The east and west sides are currently green space and driveways leading to the Northwestern Highway Service Drive. The site contains fourteen point four seven acres of land with six hundred and seventeen point seven eight feet of frontage on the Northwestern Highway Service Drive in the depth of one thousand fifty-three point two six feet. The proposed site plan indicates the construction of a one hundred and one thousand sixty-eight gross square foot addition to the existing building for Durr's North American Headquarters, and will consist of office use, training, testing, and validation of their products. The proposed elevations reflect a mix of pre-capped concrete panels, metal siding, and glass. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the site plan were, site plan review standards of the zone ordinance. The petitioner should implement recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department to Prime Prevention Bureau regarding site security. The proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan noting office research for the parcels.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Madam President, I'm with the board. The city of Southfield has been working with Durr for approximately two years. We had, um, a meeting with the Engineering Society that brought us together with Durr, so we are very excited to see this project moving forward. One of the requirements that Durr had asked is that the city, um, advance their site plan process as quickly as possible. Um, Durr does not own the property at this point, they are looking to make sure that all the approvals are in place. Um, additionally, they will be coming to the city for some assistance, um, regarding incentives. Um, I believe they're making approximately a thirty million dollar investment at this location, and they really need to bring all the elements together in order to present their case to their, um, headquarters in Germany. But we're very excited to see this moving forward, it's been a long relationship, um, they've identified this location because of that, um, the outstanding location that is central to their, all their other facilities, um, so we're really excited about this project. Um, Mark Adams is here from Oakland County, and he also wanted to say a few words.
Good evening, council, Madam President, Mayor. I'm here in support of this, uh, project, and I think it's a, a good project for the state of Michigan and our region, and of course, the city of Southfield, these types of projects always can go someplace else, so, uh, I think this will be, uh, a good addition to the global community here in Southfield, and we're here as the county in support of, uh, the city of Southfield, Fred, Shelley, and whatever we can do to make sure it happens.
And Mr. Adams, can you give us your position for the viewing audience?
Mark Adams, Oakland County Economic Development, uh, twenty-one hundred Pontiac Lake Road Water Edition.
Okay, very good, thank you, we continue.
Thank you very much, uh, there's a representative from, um, Durr, she's the, uh, casual girl.
Hi, Louise Newman, um, principal in charge for Smith Group, J.J. Arbery Architects, floor door on the project, um, and if you're representing door tonight as well, um, as mentioned, um, they spent a lot of time investigating different properties, and they've settled, or they would like to settle on this property. They hope to close on the property, um, before the end of this year, but part of the closing is getting the site plan through all of the steps, so just share with you a little bit of the detail about the site, uh, what's being planned for the inside of the building and the exterior image. I think you probably saw this before, but we'll just touch me upon that again. So, uh, door, as you know, is a global company, uh, headquartered in Germany. Uh, our team just spent, uh, several days in Germany with door, looking at their headquarters and the very high standards they have there for their facilities, and bring that into this facility in Southfield. Uh, there's four global divisions, uh, painting assembly systems, application technology, measuring and processing systems, and clean technology systems. Um, twenty-six countries, fifty-six business locations, and thirty-five production facilities throughout the world. In Michigan, um, their largest facility is in Plymouth right now, the paint and final assembly system, um, and then in Auburn Hills, um, there's technology systems very similar to what they're proposing to bring into Southfield, the addition is very similar to Auburn Hills. And then, uh, in Wism, there's a cleaning and filtration system in that location, and those operations will be remaining in Wism. Um, so, uh, door is all about, you know, one campus and, and the engineering, um, expertise that it brings throughout, uh, the world, all of its products. Um, what we saw in Germany was their testing center, and that will be similar to what they're doing here in Southfield. Um, these images just show some of what that looks like on the inside of the building. Um, and then the validation center is the other portion to the addition for this project, where they ensure that their systems are ready to be sent out into the field, to their customers. Um, balancing and assembly is another activity that will occur in the validation center, um, main technology. So, um, you know, very, uh, renowned company worldwide, and they're really hoping to bring their business to Southfield. So, the, the site in Southfield is in a very good location for them, um, direct freeway access, and this is just overlaying, showing your, um, the, um, the trails and the bike paths that you have in Southfield, and I think their, their culture there for the four hundred people that are going to work in this facility are very happy with biking and healthy lifestyles, and so they're excited to know, we've shared this with them in Southfield offices. The building, as it's seen from the north looking south, uh, really the existing building is just three, uh, uh, components around the courtyard. We're planning to completely renovate the existing facility and then add on, um, to the south of the site. And as you saw previously in the, uh, earlier piece, the existing building was built in the, uh, late nineteen sixties, and, uh, we're proposing to, uh, really give it a whole clean, new look, but we're respecting its heritage. So the primary entrance will be, uh, from the north for visitors. Uh, there'll be an employee entry off the east side, we're adding parking, uh, on the east side, there's a total of approximately five hundred cars on site, they have about four hundred and fifteen employees, so, um, we're definitely, you know, got additional parking, a lot might be on their employees. There's also, uh, customer training entrance to the west side of the building, they will have, um, some of their customers that they sell their systems to occasionally in the building, um, learning how to use the equipment and the systems, and so that's what's going on in the training center. And then the testing and the validation is what, uh, primarily their business is about. Um, all of the office uses are engineering, um, engineering, sales, marketing, those kinds of uses in the office. So typical floor plan, um, as you can see, we're going to, um, you know, renovate the, the courtyard and treat the courtyard as a primary organizational element for the space, with the cafeteria on one side, lobby and, uh, human resources and purchasing in the front, and then the block to the east, the two-story block, will be all of their engineering, sales, and marketing team. And just a little bit about what the test center and validation is like. Um, and really the exciting part of this is that they're planning to really upgrade the, uh, image of the facility. Right now it's a series of, uh, buildings that have been, you know, aged over time, so, uh, much in keeping with their headquarters in Germany that we were just visiting, um, the new exterior would kind of unify the front of the building and restore, um, all-new glass, instead of single bean glass, putting an insulated glass, um, throughout and, um, really upgrading the exterior look of the building. So it'll look like this from the freeway. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and, um, we're very excited to get presented to the editing mission a few times, and council, uh, last time and here tonight, hoping to get the file in.
Yes, um, you probably heard me at the last meeting, and I'm, I'm really...
I'm sorry, I can't...
And I'm really excited that we're having Durr to come to Southfield, because we have tried to auto suppliers, and this will help it right in to, um, the leading companies that we have here, so it's, um, a good move for them, it's a good move for us, as we're trying to build an area of auto suppliers and successfully sell to Durr as a happy addition to our community, and we're delighted to have them. I can't say enough of the things about it.
Yeah, just a second. I was extremely pleased with the presentation we had, uh, two weeks ago in our study meeting. I'm, uh, really don't have any questions, other than a statement to say that, um, this is a great addition to Southfield's auto-related inventory of companies, uh, Durr, Denso, uh, AAF, Eaton, and so on and so forth, uh, come out, maybe that, uh, uh, really, really pleased to have, um, four hundred, uh, employees coming into Southfield, occupying, taking over a empty building, upgrading the buildings that are retired, uh, and I think the, the plans for what we're planning to do at the front of the building are, uh, excellent, kind of sort of nice space on, uh, um, the service drive and the highway. So, uh, I'm extremely supportive.
Sure, uh, for the residents who've been watching this meeting and don't know, we had an extensive study session with this two weeks ago, as my colleagues had mentioned, um, and not only was the plan excellently presented, but I, I brought up two things that even enhance the, the move even more. Uh, it was told that, uh, once all the facilities are merged into this one Southfield facility, there's probably an eighty percent capacity of the jobs that would be, uh, coming to Southfield. So I, I had mentioned to, uh, the representative from door then, uh, to work hand in hand with our Michigan work center here in Southfield, which is the Southfield Career Center, because we have a lot of talented, uh, Southfielders who, uh, have been displaced because of the economic conditions we've been suffering in. Um, so, uh, there was a commitment from, uh, door then, and I'm sure a commitment from door now, that, you know, moving to Southfield, uh, we are... you know, moving to Southfield, we are excited to welcome you here and want the opportunity to put Southfielders back to work. And I know that that partnership is going to be strong. And then the second thing, which is always a concern of Ms. Jordan, is when employees move to the city of Southfield, we want to make sure that they're helping us fill in the housing stock of the city of Southfield. So I know that there will be a partnership between the city and Door to make sure that employees are brought in and transferred around, that we're going to be as open as possible, if you can help promote as possible, our neighborhoods, our diverse housing stock. And that's another win-win for your corporation, for the city, and for our residents here in building up our neighborhoods and increasing property values. So I'll echo Ms. Seymour and Mr. Seiber. I'm excited to welcome you to Southfield.
Mr. Adams. Madam Chair. I move SP thirteen twenty-three, the site plan review request, Carl Breckel, DRS to think.
It's a word.
We have a motion by Mr. Patton, brought in by Mr. Fraser to approve that SP thirteen twenty-two. And I echo my colleagues and I think this is a very important case. Are there any questions?
I'd like to make a comment. I was up ready area. The other day I see the engineers out there getting ready to resurface that service drive. So I know the infrastructure is important to getting to Southfield and I see the engineers not coming off the lines out there.
Okay. Um, I was thinking, but for Southfield, Southfield is a store, I think you wouldn't say, maybe you're like, like anyone that comes here, it's because of them, so it's a win-win situation.
I understand. We have a motion by Mr. Patton, brought in by Mr. Fraser, all the favor.
All right.
Thank you very much. Very excited to be here.
All right, you're welcome. Welcome over to guide number three of the site plan, Mr. Grove.
Yes, thank you. Our next site plan is site plan thirteen twenty-two. Site plan review request of Nicole Jeffries, Versa Development. On behalf of the owner, Harvard Plaza Limited Partnership, to construct a nineteen thousand nine hundred fifty gross square foot, medical office building on vacant land located at two-nine-three-five-zero-Southfield Road on the northeast corner of Southfield Roads and Edwards. I have a brief video presentation and a very brief PowerPoint presentation. Get ready for it.
SP thirteen twenty-two is the site plan review request to Nicole Jeffries. On behalf of Versa Development, to construct a nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty gross square foot medical office building, property located at two-nine-three-five-zero-Southfield Road, on the northeast corner of Southfield Road and Edward Avenue, intersection twelve of the city. The subject property, as well as the properties to the north and south, resumes OS office service. The properties to the east, resume RE, single-family residential. The properties to the west, across Southfield Road, resumes OS office service and B1 neighborhood business. With regard to the existing land use, the subject property is vacant. The properties to the north and south are developed with an office building in Comerica Bank respectively. The properties to the east are developed with single-family homes fronting both Edwards Avenue and Laser Boulevard. And the properties to the west, across Southfield Road, are developed with small commercial strip center. The site contains two point seven eight acres with two hundred and eighty point four feet of frontage on Southfield Road and a depth of four hundred and thirty-one point one seventy on Edward Avenue. So the site plan indicates the construction of a new nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty gross square foot medical office building. The proposed elevations reflect a mix of brick, split-grade CMU, metal, coping, and glass with MABR bonding. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the site plan were, site plan review standards are disorganized. The petitioner is to implement the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding the city's security. The proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan, noting north-Southfield Road area for the personal.
The planning department received the site plan requests on August fourth, two thousand fourteen. The planning commission held a regular meeting on this matter on September seventeenth, two thousand fourteen, and made a favorable recommendation. Also, this came before the council study session on October sixth. I'm just going to queue up the PowerPoint.
Good evening. I'm Nicole Jeffries, I'm with Versa Development. We're located at twenty-five nine hundred, West eleven Mile, here in Southfield, near Southfield-based business. And we're a real estate developer and this is a site here on, that's what we're very excited about. We are looking at bringing in approximately twenty thousand square feet of medical office. At our, at your planning meeting two weeks ago, we talked about the tenant, which is planned to be a Henry Ford Optomire, which is optometry and ophthalmology. We have, we're proposing to process building on the existing site here at Edwards and Southfield Road. Currently, there is no, there was a building there that burned down a few years ago. We are proposing to the building to be set back ninety-eight point eight feet from Southfield Road right of way and practically hundred and thirty-one point six feet from the property to the rear, which is to the east, and that's the residential property. So we will be reducing or will be increasing the green space on this property quite a bit from what was there previously. The parking will be pulled back from the right of way. We are also proposing to incorporate streetscape elements along Southfield Road, which will be in conjunction with some of the other new developments that's happening along this corridor to match what's happening there, testing and brick piers and whatnot we're planning on. And I'm here to answer questions tonight. We are very excited about this development. We're hoping to bring jobs for twenty to twenty-five employees and up to, we're hoping to up to forty by the time this, this office building builds up. So open up to the questions.
Okay, very good.
Yes, the previous developments caused several of them were caused quite a bit of concern to the residents in the area because of the traffic and noise issues. Now have you communicated with the residents at last conference? Well, how you have and what your response is to them?
Well, when we first submitted our application, I know the planning department notified all the residents, I believe it was a two-hundred-and-fifty or three-hundred-and-fifty foot radius of this property. So everybody was notified. And in addition, I know the planning department and myself have both had lots of conversations with the property owner directly to the east, Mr. Parrish, I forget his name is. And so everybody was notified. We, at the planning commission study meeting and the, and the regular planning commission meeting, there were residents there that did talk to us and stand up and voice their concerns. I think their biggest concern was traffic, as you mentioned. And one of the ways we're trying to combat that is we reduce the number of purpose on Edwards. If you look at the existing, what were, what was there before, I believe there was three driveways coming out of Edwards. We've reduced that down to one, which you can see on this rendering, or if I go back to the site plan, there on the bottom. We are proposing just the one drive entry on the Edwards. Edwards is also one-way going back to the east. So we really think that the traffic is going to be coming out on Edwards and going to light Edwards and Southfield Road. They cannot go, just got Edwards there. So there, we won't be sending traffic down Edwards going towards the residential property. All the residents that were at our meeting were happy with this solution. Originally, we did have two drives on Edwards and then I think it was one of the, it was one of the consultants or your traffic consultant recommended just doing the one driveway, which we are fine with. And then obviously, we also have the, the other driveway at Southfield Road, which is really the main entry.
And what about the buffer, the time parking area, the buffer between the parking area and the, there's a wall?
Yep. There's an existing wall on the eastern property line right now, or a part, part of the existing wall is falling down. Planning asked that we rebuild that wall or we put a new wall in, which is what we're proposing. That's what, what's on our plans and we are committed to that, meeting the, to these Southfield standards for the, for the wall. So that will be, will be rebuilt, the wall. In addition, we are, you also right now, the parking lot that's still there pretty much goes right up to the property line. So as you can see on this render, or on this site plan, we are proposing to pull the parking lot back. The closest the parking lot is to that property line is about fifty-four feet and it, and that's the minimal distance. And then the building is another, the building about a hundred and thirty-one feet away. So we're pulling the parking at least fifty-four feet away from that property line.
The wall, from the wall.
And the wall.
And the wall.
Yep.
Through the chair, Ms. Seymour. Mr. Parrish sent an email at four fifty-nine PM today. I believe you were well addressed on it, but you may not have a chance to see it. He also left a voicemail saying that this is a win-win situation for the neighborhood and the city, that a number of his concerns have been addressed. The only thing that he wanted mentioned was the hours of operation. And I would ask Nicole if you would mind just sharing that with the council, but he did use the term win-win situation and he wanted to make sure that that information was passed along to the council tonight.
Well, I have a couple of Mr. Parrish on the occasion because we have the other issue. So I'm aware of his concerns and likewise, I have some questions I would ask, I'd have to get into the book, but when?
The hours of operation are going to be Monday through Friday, eight AM to eight PM. Saturday, nine AM to six PM. And Sunday, eleven AM to five PM.
And do you expect to have a lot of tra, a lot of visitors on the weekend? Is that normal?
No, the weekend traffic is less. The doctors are really only in on the weekdays. So majority of the traffic will be on the weekdays. In addition, the entrance, the main entrance to the building for customers, for, for patients is on the Southfield Road frontage. So that's where the majority of traffic will be, where the majority of people parking will be. We're planning on, towards the rear of the site will be where employees park. So those won't be as much traffic. It will only be hopefully where they get there and when they leave. So we're expecting the majority of the in and out of the parking lot will be up on the west side of the property away from the residential.
So any questions that they could ask?
Mr. Grove, more or less, still not aware. I received an email from Mr. Parrish, who's more or less been the voice of the neighborhood. And then just before the meeting, Mr. Parrish called me and asked me to read his email, which I won't do since Mr. Grove has, most of it. But I will say that he addressed the email to the council, the mayor, the planning department, and now Culpeper, the planning commission chair. And he said that he wanted to thank all of us for creating a win-win situation with Harvard Plaza, Beacon Lot. He also said that he talked to the representatives of the developer, Versa Development, and they assured me that we will have to respond to them if we have any concern about construction process or the subsequent operation of the building. So once again, I think the, this is a testament that the neighborhood's concerned already. So thank you for working on that and I'm glad Mr. Parrish could be here this evening. Glad to start with you.
I did give Mr. Parrish my business card and I had a long conversation with him in person and told him if there are any issues, particularly during construction, because that's when I would expect it, that he can call me at any time. And our office is five minutes away, so I think he really, the owner, and told him if any issues.
I know, he appreciates that. Thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Grove, how many parking spaces are in there?
They don't even have. They, they are in excess. They, they call me if you can help me out.
I believe the required spaces was one forty-five, they're proposing one fifty.
One forty-five?
Well, one forty-eight is required.
One forty-eight, you have one fifty?
One fifty plus their bike rack, which really gives them an additional parking space.
My question is, it looks like you have landscaping and trees. What kind of trees are those going to be, you know? Some trees are the same to us.
I could just add, while she's looking that up, that we asked them to model the street theme that was a development approved for the joint development. So there are brick piers with wrought iron sensing and low-grade perennials to screen fronts of the car. In addition to that, there are some additional street trees, which are more into disentress line versus evergreen. The evergreens would be, if any, would be located towards the rear if we have, for additional offering.
Yep. Yep. The front trees that you can see on the rendering, it looks like we're calling out the tool trees, the snow, the hair trees, so different than the US trees.
My question is, is the required parking, I mean, is pretty close to the provided parking? Where you put the snow?
I'm sorry, where?
Where you gonna put the snow?
I think we've got room on the north side of the site there and on the south side, so we should be able to make that work. But that's something we...
If I put, if there's substantial green belt along the eastern property line or to the rear where snow, snow storage could be placed.
And that's where the employees are parking?
Well, it's, the employees are parking towards the rear, but there's that fifty-four foot green belt offer between the edge of the parking lot and the, and the wall.
Well, I'm just, you know, looking at the rendering, just trees.
Go back for those, I can't.
I just wonder how they're gonna get the snow ball in between to get the parking lot clear so that, because like, like I said, the required parking and the provided parking is pretty close to...
I, I could say this, that this is probably twenty percent less parking than what was on, on the site. So the parking went right up to the wall and actually encroaches into the Southfield Road right of way. So there's, there's much more green space here to allow for snow storage than it was previously.
Thanks, Donna. The rural green space.
Yeah.
Also in the notes, it said that, the note to note parking is twenty-eighteen feet and we require twenty-eight. Was that correct?
We actually don't have any note to note parking. There was a former iteration of this plan in which we did have noted on parking in the rear of the site, so I don't think that really applies. Do you have any more?
All right, thank you.
Yes, Terry, how is the store, you know, the, what do they call it, the storage, storage in the front?
Well, I believe that Ms. Schultz addressed that during the study session. Well, I believe, uh, Ms. Schultz addressed that during the study session. But if I recall, this is, as you know, a real commission of Oakland County. There are open ditches now, I believe. They, um, they're underground.
Um, we're, we're gonna be tying into, there's a seventy-two-inch Oakland County sewer that runs on this road, and we're gonna be tying into the enclosed sewer, um, that in the ditch. We'll also be adding stormwater detention.
Okay, council, we're gonna take a motion now?
Uh, Ms. Seymour.
Good work.
We have a motion, I believe, that you've already identified, which was approved. Uh, it's S P thirteen twenty-two. Any questions? Want to comment, I think, of which you know that this, one of the tenants in this building will be getting some sort of, I find, so like very good tenants in this location. This building has been put in, particularly Southfield, particularly, uh, Southfield Road. So, we'll entertain the vote at this time, all in favor?
Aye.
Madam Chair, I just want to say too, that this is a, a use that is needed in our city. And I've talked to residents about the use for this building. People are in fact, um, that, um, the eye care facility will be there. So, it's not only the very attractive building, like, vacant land in our city, it's providing service that will be great to appreciate.
That's unreported, very exciting, in this location.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next time, I'm on our agenda, it's a S P thirteen twenty-one, which you go.
Thank you. Thank you. Uh, S P thirteen twenty-one is the site plan review request of Brian Nager, Nager Companies, to construct a new entrance driveway onto Mount Vernon Street from the cornerstone plaza property located at two-three-six-seven-five Greenfield Road on the southwest corner of Mount Vernon and Greenfield Road. I have a brief video presentation, and we have a brief PowerPoint presentation.
S P thirteen twenty-one is the site plan review request of Brian Nager on behalf of Nager Companies to construct a new driveway on the north side of property located at two-three-six-seven-five Greenfield Road. On the west side of Greenfield Road, between Mount Vernon Street and Providence Drive, section twenty-five of City. The area proposed for the new driveway is known P vehicular parking and C two-plan business. The properties to the north of the proposed drive are known R three, single-family rental. The properties to the east and west of the proposed driveway are known R T, attached to the family. The area to the south of the proposed driveway is known B two-plan business. The area to the north of the proposed drive is developed with a single-family home running Mount Vernon Street. The area to the south is currently redbelt area with the existing cornerstone plaza of the yard. The area to the east is green space along Mount Vernon Street, and the area to the west is a fence with additional green space beyond. The entire state contains twelve point two-three acres of land with eight hundred and eighty-three feet of frontage on Greenfield Road, thirty-three feet of frontage on Mount Vernon Street, and a depth of six hundred feet along Providence Drive. The submitted site plan indicates the construction of a new driveway to allow access to and from Mount Vernon Street. Issues considered by the planning department during the review of the site plan are: the site plan review standards of the zoning ordinance, the submitted traffic impact study, the petitioner intends to act the recommendations made by the Southfield Police Department's Crime Prevention Bureau regarding site security, the driveway is to be constructed in accordance with city standards, modification of the existing development agreement restricting access to and from Mount Vernon Street. This proposal is in accordance with the Southfield Comprehensive Master Plan, noting cornerstone development authority areas for the parcel.
I just wanted to note that the video was prepared with the old, um, plan. We have the new version of the plan without the divertment as part of the PowerPoint. Also, this planning department received the site plan application on July thirty-first, two thousand fourteen. Lending Commission held a regular meeting on this matter on September seventeenth, two thousand fourteen. They made a favorable recommendation. This also came to the city council study session on October sixth, where the discussion, along with the moving that the vert, the vert was talked about, and I'm going to have to set up a PowerPoint presentation.
Hey, I'm Chair and members of council. I want to thank you in advance and let you know that I appreciate your time tonight. Um, we are here to discuss the.
Give us your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, Brian Nager, on behalf of Nager Companies and Cornerstone Plaza on two-three-six-seven-five Greenfield Road. Um, I would like to, to start off by saying that, that, you know, the presentation here was, was very well done. And just to give you a brief history, uh, the, the plaza was developed in, in nineteen ninety-nine as a grocery anchor shopping center. Uh, we went through the planning process, and throughout that process, we worked in coordination with the city of Southfield and revised the plan several times to create a good look in the shopping center. The importance of that was to integrate this shopping center with the neighborhood, to make it a neighborhood-friendly shopping center. Uh, and one of the emphasis points was on making this a walkable district, a walkable shopping center, and a friendly neighborhood destination. So, um, with that in mind, uh, we, we went back to the drawing board and, and produced what we did here at Cornerstone Plaza. Uh, you know, we're very proud of it and wanted to produce a Class A development all the way. Um, in doing that, throughout the years, we've taken some feedback from tenants and customers as well. And I wanted everybody on the council to know that, that this is not something that has come overnight. This is something that has been going on for quite some time, and we looked at it and studied it. And in doing that, throughout the last two months, I've had numerous meetings with, um, neighborhood associations, starting with the Southfield Homeowners Association. And the idea there was to get feedback from the neighborhood and engage in some, some, you know, productive dialogue, which we did. Uh, we also met with the, the association from, uh, Fed and Run, as well as Providence Towers. And on a side note, I actually did a fourth meeting with just those on Mount Vernon. So, we did a separate mail-in to everybody on Mount Vernon and had them engage us as well. So, uh, with that in mind, we, we took into account everybody's feedback, and, uh, here we are. So, um, the, the emphasis here on the project is to allow customers coming in and out of the shopping center a better, safer path. And that's kind of what we've really been, been pointing on in this discussion. Uh, if you are, if, uh, if you are leaving the shopping center and want to head south on Greenfield Road, you don't run into too many issues. Uh, if you want to leave the shopping center and head north on the Greenfield Road, there in life a problem, and it becomes quite a, quite an issue and quite a safety issue, as Mike will discuss in, in a few minutes here. So, um, I want to bring him up here. Actually, I'll, I'll bring him up down, Mike. If you want to review the PowerPoint that you presented or that you put together.
And do you think that's your name?
My name is Mike Gladley. I work with, uh, insurance consulting firm, Mason Van De Brick. Just so you know, there's, there was a traffic study that's done for this. The scope of this study was based on requirements that the city had. Um, was we studied and approached the work the way the city, which traffic group wanted me to. So, given that, uh, we can probably talk about that later.
Excuse me, can you speak directly?
Oh, I'm sorry. Sure. Um, if you, if you, if you can look up at the, uh, it'll show up on the screen. There'll be some issues up on that. Uh, existing traffic operations, level of service, crashes, and traffic queues. I just kind of listed four or five things there that are probably worth talking about that are related to the traffic work, to try to explain some of the stuff that's in this study. Uh, existing traffic operations means what are people currently doing? And how well are, how well does it operate? Are they taking any risks? Are they facing long delays? Are they facing long traffic queues, things like that? Which would cause, which might be things that might be improved in some way, by constructing. Uh, so, if you look, and I, and I don't know if you've had the chance to go through the report on it, but currently, everything is working pretty well as far as level of service. And level of services is a qualitative measure of how well the traffic is being processed. So, level of service A is good, F is not good. And it's all associated, in this case, with stop-the-labor view. The only place that's not working that well are the left turns to go north out on the Greenfield. Those are a problem. And, um, those are operating in level of service E and level of service F. And it's in the, if you see in the, the report, we, you can see it in the tables, and it's in the discussion. Someone asked me at the last meeting, and I can't remember who, about traffic crashes, did we look at those? We did look at those. Um, well, we did put them in the report. But I do have a summary, real quick, that, that's kind of gives you some idea what goes on with crash experience out there. The, in my little world where we study this kind of thing, a statistically significant time period for doing a traffic crash study is three years. So, um, the most recent three years where you have three years of data is two thousand eleven to two thousand and thirteen, those three years. In those three years between Mount Vernon and Providence, there were forty-six traffic crashes. Right? It seemed like more than you would expect. Of those crashes, three of them were single-vehicle accidents, which is sort of unrelated to what goes on in this center, maybe, the movements in there. Uh, four of them were head-on left turns, eleven angles. All that angle crashes are things that come from people making left turns and running into people that are going through. Uh, eighteen rear ends, five sides, so I have to five others. The rear ends are probably focused at the, at the traffic signals. So, there are a number of accidents that are related to the left turns going out of the site. How does that relate to this? Well, if we reduce the number of left turns going out of the site at the driveway, then we're gonna reduce the crashes, simple say. Oh, well, yeah, we'll get to that. So, under existing conditions, you have everything working pretty well except for long delays and poor level of service for the left turns. Crashes, there are some crashes that are related to left turns. Um, and there are long queues at those, those stop sign controlled driveways as well. Why do people sit in a long queue? Uh, uh, I don't know. They do it. And, um, do some of them already tend to go out of their way to go to a signal? Yes, but not enough of them, and certainly, that's not a regular occurrence. If you add this driveway, the next full day, there is no new traffic. The centers are fully occupied. This, putting this driveway here does not create more square footage or anything like that to cause new trips to come to the site. So, there's no new traffic. So, we took the traffic patterns that are there today and looked at them, like I said, would keep it improved if you build this driveway? Um, we reassign those, those traffic from those movements that could have, could have benefited from this. And if you look in the, the report, there's about fifty percent of the, those turns we made, we reassign to the, to the, to the new driveway to make a left turn at Mount Vernon to go west. Um, under future, where we take it through, the delays go down, and the operation at Mount Vernon and Greenfield is, stays the same. Um, and we're gonna be able to, we found some issues with the timing, so we're gonna be able to improve on that a little bit, too. And we're gonna be able to coordinate the traffic between, uh, Mount Vernon and Providence a little bit better, so the cars are moving into the lanes instead of being so scattered. So, it'll be easier to use all the driveways. I think that's it. And then, oh, you want to go over the council?
Just go over the next one.
Well, that's, I guess that is kind of important there. Uh, the thing that I think that you, you would like to make sure you understand here is that I, uh, I don't want to be, uh, kind of too confusing about this, but. Can you, you can all see this? If I point on this, you can see it up there? Okay. Maybe, if, if, just keep in mind that the idea here is, is to not create new trips, but to reassign the left turns that are going out this drive from the one that's further down here. You, you will get some people, right now, that make this turn and come in or go down to someone. You'll get some that'll do that. You'll get some that, and this is very few, but you might get a couple that do that. But, for the most part, there's, um, so, there was someone that had some concern about the increased traffic on Mount Vernon. Yeah, we're gonna get new cars over here. Yeah, we're gonna get some more cars in here. And as those people that got reassigned from this, they're going out here and making left go this way. But to the west, no. Those are people that are already there, unfortunately, but they do right now. They have to make a left here, and they make a left here to turn left, you go west on Mount Vernon. They're just gonna be able to do it safer going this way. That's all there is to it. There are no new trips. Any questions?
Okay. Uh, I just want to make sure, explain that you get the information needed. Where's the address? I thought you was a little.
Um, I think the two-three-six-seven-five Greenfield?
Uh, it's two-three-six-seven-five Greenfield.
Okay. Very good. All right. Um, I do want to make a comment, and then, as far as wanting to be first. This information was reviewed and discussed at our city council committee of the whole. Uh, tonight is not a public hearing, um, on this banner, on this site plan. The planning commission allows public comment. As well as our city council meeting last Monday, so we, uh, received a, uh, full opinion of the residents in the area. So, I just wanted to make this, this, uh, a public hearing for this banner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, I, I did receive several calls from residents in the neighborhood this afternoon, and I went out in on Mount Vernon, um, in the middle of the afternoon to see how bad the traffic was, and the traffic is terrible because it's two-lane, narrow road, there's no parking on the underside, and the traffic going both ways is frankly terrible. But the thing that was brought to my attention was there had been a letter from the president of the homeowners association, which was given to us at the last meeting, council of the whole, the city session. And there were a number of questions there that had not been answered. And the call, a couple of the calls that I got this afternoon were, they would like to have the answers to the letter that she sent to your organization. that she sent to your organization and, and those answers were not given. So, I'm, I am concerned about, uh, what, you know, the way you're presenting it. It doesn't look like there's going to be any additional traffic. They're concerned that there will be, and their concerns are quite, quite all encompassed to a panic stage. But the letter that was sent, I think they deserve an answer. It was addressed, my understanding, we'd all get the letter in a packet. And I believe it was addressed to the nature organization. Can you respond to that?
Well, I, I, I believe that we've, we've covered, um, all of the points here. If there's something specific in the letter that needs to be addressed, I'd, I'd be happy to address it.
Well, unfortunately, I don't have the letter with me, but they're, what they're asking is, the reform decision is may they like to have the answers to the letter? And I can see their point.
Does, does anybody have a copy of the letter? Again, we've, we've gone through.
There's one back there, I believe. There is one, uh, present, I believe, in the picture.
Uh, we, one of the, one of the, uh, questions that is being asked by, uh, and I don't know if this is coming from the homeowners association as a whole or an individual within the association, but nevertheless.
Well, they had, they had a meeting, and I do believe that there were quite a few questions, but it wasn't one person.
I, I attended the meeting, I was, I was at the meeting, I, I addressed the questions at that time. Um, but I'd be happy to go over them again. The, one, one is that, uh, you know, with regard to the businesses there, are they losing money? And, you know, how is this going to project their, their bottom line? The only answer that I can give is I don't have exactly, you know, the, the, the tenant's profitability or not. I can compare it to some of the other stores. Two of our tenants do report sales, that is CBS and Kroger. And, uh, with regards to those, they are, um, average to below average in, in sales. So, that, that, that does show that they're being impacted, and this is a very important issue to them. Um, and I believe that everybody has copies of the letter that were, letters that were given by, by the tenants, um, stating how this is affecting their business and how they do think that this would be a positive impact on them. So, that was one.
But excuse me, but they don't have any statistics to pass that they're, I mean, I don't remember the Kroger specifically was saying that they thought they were being impacted by this.
Right, well, there's no, there's no statistical, uh, study that has been done. And I don't, I don't know if that, that study is out there that exists, but as far as, uh, factual data, we do have, we have provided the traffic study, uh, and that is a general, a universally accepted, uh, insight. You know, they're, they're known for a reason and, and, uh, you know, I think that, that we, we, we did that in accordance with what, what was general practice with city's outfield and engineering and, and that sort of thing. So, um, the second point is, uh, that, that this, that this will not compound the existing problem. Again, I can only, I can. I think that, and I don't want to make up the fact that, I don't understand the premise of the way this study was done, okay? The center was sitting there today generating trips with no driv, with no driveway, correct? Everybody that comes and goes to that has a certain pattern. They're going to keep following the pattern if it works for them, if it's not, but if they can find a pattern that's safer and or easier, then they're going to go that way. Makes good sense. So, I'll, a driveway is not going to generate new trips to the center. It's going to defer some of the trips at the center, but you're not going to have new trips. Planet, planet simple. But I'm not going to disagree with the fact that people, there will be more trips on the section of Mount Vernon between the driveway and the new driveway and Greenfield. I agree with that. To the west, absolutely not. Those people that come to the center, instead of going to Greenfield and making a right turn and another right turn, they can come in and go into the new driveway. And the best part is that you can use the new driveway to make a left to go back, out to go back west again, instead of trying to fight their way out onto Greenfield with a left turn and then another left turn when they get to Mount Vernon signal. There's not going to be new trips west of the driveway. There just doesn't make any sense to even think that there's going to be. There's nothing going to be added to the center to cause new, new patrons or anything like that.
But it was, there was, I don't think there one time it was closed, is that correct? There was?
I don't know.
I believe there was. I've been told there was, that one time there was a driveway there, it was closed, now it's being reopened.
Well, maybe, I mean, back in the day, maybe there were, it was, it was new traffic.
I don't know, I don't know, anyway.
That, that, that's all I'm saying, is that it, you, you have to, there's nothing that they're going to do, the center's going to have, that's going to cause an increase in traffic. So.
I'm sure that's one of the reasons.
Well, I'm sure it is. The, uh, the last point in, uh, in the letter that, that I would actually like to address is, you know, the, the neighborhood has supported the shopping center. And I'm patronizing it, and, and I'm sure all of the, uh, all of the, uh, tenants there appreciate that. And it goes on to say that the project can cause devaluation of residential property on Mount Vernon. Um, that I would specifically like to address because I think what we're dealing with here is, 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 uh, exactly the opposite. I think that by having a class A vibrant full shopping center, I think it's helping out that, that, that enhances property values. I think that, that creates a, a good, clean, safe environment for people to shop in, um, and, and, you know, keep property values where we need them, as opposed to having, you know, another hundred or two hundred dollars worth of an empty shopping center in the middle of the neighborhood. That we don't want, we don't want to see, uh, you know, some of the, the uses that we see in other shopping centers. We, we, you know, we do our best to keep national tenants in here, quality tenants such as Dither Bank and, you know, Kroger, CVS. And we have quite a bit of national tenants in there, and there's a reason for that. The way the shopping center looks, uh, the way it's been developed, and we want to continue to build on success there and keep property values up and keep this a vibrant shopping center. We don't want to see a big empty Kmart shopping center, that's not what we're looking for. So, any opportunity that there is for us to add quality tenants and restaurants and things like that that will serve the neighborhood, that's what we do, so.
So, do you feel that, that situation isn't allowed to continue as it is going to hurt the retail stores in there?
Uh, in my opinion, I think it had been hurting them for quite some time. Again, I don't, I don't think this is an issue that just happened yesterday. This has been going on for quite some time and, and just from the feedback and things that have happened to aid of the shopping center and leases coming up, this is, this is something that was really important. And I wanted to take a proactive approach here as opposed to sitting here and doing nothing and, you know, waiting to see what happens. So, I think this is a step in the right direction, and I think it will serve the entire community there for both the years to come.
I guess my, my concern is that the residents feel that it's going to increase traffic on Mount Vernon. They're, they're very, they're really alarmed about this.
Well, well, that, that point keeps coming up, and the only thing I can say is that, you know, we've done this study, and I leave it to the experts to sort of tell me what the factual data is and what, what the traffic patterns are and, you know.
You know, I drove down there, I drove down there this afternoon and tracking them over and I saw it. And, you know, that all day, I'm sure it's not all day, but it is for.
Well, well, one of the points is that this is not going to cause any increased traffic. If there's a problem already, which, you know, there, there may be some traffic there, but this is not going to add to, you know, the problem that won't exist.
That is their fear that it will, I have to say that, that is.
Right, well, I, I, I can't.
I understand, but I have to say that because.
Right, right. Well, we also have to look at the traffic study that was done and leave it up to the, the professionals that, that do this for a living.
Thank you, may council.
Madam Chair.
Uh-huh, Mr. Frach.
Are you ready for a motion?
Yes, we are.
Madam Chair, help me with SP thirteen twenty-one, side counter view, request of large major companies to discuss the new entrance driveway at Mont Vernon Street.
Sure.
We have a motion by Mr. Frach to put it by, Mr. Frach to approve that, see thirteen twenty-one. Any question?
I do.
Uh, Mr. Frach.
Absolutely, yes. Uh, you know, one of the things that is our responsibility is to help try to make some of the safer place for the residents and businesses and companies. That's all. Um, the, uh, information that we heard this evening, which we did not hear, you know, just guesswork at the last meeting about how many accidents are, have taken place in, uh, the last three years of, uh, Greenfield going into, uh, shopping, in, in the neighborhood of the shopping center. There were forty-seven, forty-seven doesn't sound like an awful lot, except for year one, forty-seven. Uh, that doesn't sound like an awful lot. Um, there's also going to be a sidewalk that is, quite a sidewalk, and a side of the driveway that's proposed, which I think will also encourage the walkability, uh, area of south village that we, uh, that we're, we're trying to, we're trying to establish, trying to establish a more walkable community. Um, but the real litmus test that I use when I, when I try to make decisions on this is, if I lived in that area, could I live with the new, the new scenario? And I gave the conclusion is, yes, I could. Uh, I don't think, in fact, I know, I have never made a decision on this council for another area of this community that I wouldn't have made if it was in my community, in, in my neighborhood. So, I don't wish anything on anybody else that I wouldn't say yes in my neighborhood. So, I'm going to say yes to this because I, I can live with this. Uh, I, I think I've heard enough evidence that it's not going to increase the amount of, of traffic going west on Mount Vernon. And I also drove Mount Vernon this afternoon, and there weren't a number of cars, but they were spaced far enough apart that, and it was near the busy hour when I drove. They were spaced far enough apart that I think that automobiles going in and out of this area could do it without causing traffic congestion, serious kind of traffic congestion. So, I think the case has been, for me, the case has been for, for the traffic.
What I have come in.
Yes, um, at the last meeting, we, uh, the, um, study session, we were talking about maybe timing of the traffic signals and ways that, I mean, is that, is that something that was done, could be done to, to improve that horrible? You know, I mean, if, if this driveway goes through lobbies with people that want to go north and rain, you know, they're going to try to go that way because you don't get stuck in that, you know, crossfire. But were, were things, was anything found that could help with traffic signal timing at both?
Right, traffic signal timing does need to be a little bit improved, so it will be, it's part of the study. The timing to process the traffic at Mount Vernon better and then coordinating the sig, the, the traffic signal down at, uh, Providence.
That would help, because I go to that store and I know definitely what it's like and stuff.
That needs to be, needs to be, because it hasn't been looked at in a while, so it needs to be.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr. Frach to put it by Mr. Frach, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Right.
Thank you very much. Let me tie up on our agenda, we're looking at the communication portion, and the first person to be recognized is Ms. Bella King. And if you could come forward, you have three minutes to address the council. Thank you for your patience.
Good evening, how are you all? Um, before I start, um, is it possible, if I can get a.
Yes, you can go start, park, and show your machine.
Um, on behalf of Ms. Maria, I would like to thank you for allowing me to, um, speak with you tonight. Um, I am part of the foster care department at Ms. Maria, and, um, pretty much we are trying to embrace awareness about our foster care program. Um, we are located on two zero six five one West Warren in New York Heights. Um, founded by the sister of the Good Shepherd. Um, we have, um, historically worked with, um, younger women and girls since eighteen eighty-three. Um, and as far as I know, um, the, um, the needs of the community have changed, so has, um, Ms. Maria. And I only reach out to, to girls, but to boys as well. Um, our vision and mission is to ensure that vulnerable youth, um, are supported, prepared and equipped um, to accomplish lifelong success. Um, we deliver innovative care, education and treatment, and as a nonprofit agency, we are driven solely by the desire to inspire, um, and, and provide help for resources. Um, I just wanted to take a time, um, to ask you to think about your childhood and, um, your guardians or parents that, you know, you love and care about. Um, think about how they helped you with your homework, helped you write, like, or taught you right from wrong. Um, imagine if you woke up one day and they were, um, or you were removed from your home. And you sit there and you think, um, they are the reason I, I'm here today, but because I was removed from my home, it, you know, I'm sorry, um, so, um, that person I could say, for me, is my mother. Um, she is a strong woman who always wanted the best for her children and wanted, wanted us to do better than her than she did tonight. Um, also, I want to, um, bring the, bring to your attention that, um, in the state of Michigan, there are over twelve thousand children in foster care. Um, these children have been labeled by society as mystics or delinquents when the truth of the matter is that the person who was supposed to be in their lives simply disappeared. Um, and there's no longer there to teach them right from wrong, how do with their homework or motivate them? Um, so, if a child has been moved from their home, just, just think, um, of a wild animal. Um, in their habitat, there was their herd, their, um, and their family and their use of certain things. And when they're removed from that environment, they tend to act differently from when they were in their original environment when they're placed in a new environment. Um, so not today, let's think of the foster children as.
Thirty seconds.
Okay, um, so, um, the biggest thing that we can do is share this word, raise awareness. And for the city council, um, I have prepared a packet which you have received, um, with ideas that we can wait, um, Ms. Maria, um, can partner.
Okay, can you do this? Can you give us your phone number to Ms. Maria? So, there's someone in our community that would like to get engaged with your organization and this was foster care, right?
Yes.
Okay, Ms. Maria.
Um, you can reach me at three one three two seven one three zero five zero, extension two six eight.
Okay, and again, this is Ms. Maria. This is with, uh, the foster care children.
Yes, right, we know where they go foster care and, um.
Different homes, right?
Yes, living in different homes. Like, they've been living off.
Okay, they can go to the council, and we will give the information.
All right, thank you.
Okay, the next person, uh, that is supposed to be recognized is Ms. Gerard. Okay, the next person, uh, that is the person to be recognized is Mr. Gerard.
My address is Post Office Box One Fifty-Five, Southfield, Michigan, four eight zero three seven. The recent passage of the National General Amendment by this council sparked my interest in the open meetings in Public Act Two Sixty-Seven of nineteen seventy-six. This spark led to my discovery of this council's numerous violations of the eighteen sixty-seven. For starters, I'd like to begin with this council's public notice of its yearly meeting schedule, and I vote from the Act, Section Five, Subsection Two. For regular meetings of a public body, there shall be posted in each calendar year a public notice stating the dates, times, and places of its regular meetings, unquote. The key word here is places. Nowhere on this schedule is there a reference to a meeting place. Historically, council meets in council chambers, in council study room, and in the library, but there's no mention of these places on this schedule in violation of state law. Now, I'd like to move on to updates of council schedule, and I vote from the Act, Section Five, Subsection Three. If there is a change in the schedule of regular meetings of a public body, there shall be posted within three days after the meeting at which the change is made, a public notice stating the dates, times, and places of its regular meetings, unquote. The key phrase here is posted within three days. I have in hand an updated schedule approved by this council on May nineteenth, twenty fourteen, as noted in the upper right-hand corner. I also have a second updated schedule approved by this council on July fourteenth, twenty fourteen. This second schedule was never posted by the July seventeenth deadline, and instead the old schedule, the May nineteenth schedule, still remains on the official most spoken board to this very day, nine to five days after the three days deadline in violation of state law. Also, you folks have to put your telephone number on your yearly schedule as required by the Act, Section Four, Subsection Eight. Again, violating the state law. Check it out, check it out. Thank you, Madam President. Thank you.
Okay, the next person to be recognized is Mr. Fred Uner. The next person that is in panel chair.
President, I'm not going to repeat my address and phone number because I want to get right down to what I'm here about. You see my shirt here? I'm asking you guys to respectfully vote no for that Southfield Street Improvement Bond proposal. Here's why. In nineteen ninety-seven, when the city said that tax abatements would be a win-win, seventeen years later, what's the win-win? You said it would generate money, it would be great for the residents, for the city, for the administration. If it's so great, why do you need ninety-nine million dollars? You said the public safety millage would be a win-win situation. It took you a long time to attempt to do right by public safety, and there was money allocated for roads. Not sure if you used it, but residents, don't take my word. Do your own research. Now, the city got that library bond. You guys are struggling to make those, uh, library bond payments. You're waiting for the opportunity to renegotiate the interest rate on those bonds. So, residents, let me tell you something. The public safety millage, this, this bond proposal does not go with the charter's maximum amount of mills that the city can impose. So, it has nothing to do with what they call debt millage. So, think of ninety-nine million dollars. Think of your children's, 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 children's paying for that. Also, too, um, if the values of the property keeps going down, the city is going to have to levy more mills, which would mean more taxes in order for them to be able to make the bond payments. Also, too, there's going to be a town hall meeting tomorrow. Why don't you come? Why don't you ask the city to tell you for seventeen years how the tax abatements have been a win-win situation for you and this community? Mr. Moss, you have asked for information on tax abatements for quite a while, and I'm not sure that they ever gave it to you. I know that you're in support of this bond proposal, that's your business, but the company that came tonight, that's new development. If they ask for a tax abatement, I may not be against that. You know why? Because they're going to be putting more money into this project that they're doing at the old DTE building, which was more than what they had anticipated. New development. You guys have used tax abatements as a means to market this city because you were not seeking new development. Residents, please vote no on the road to ruin, and that would be this bond proposal. Please vote no and come to that town hall tomorrow.
Your time is up. Thank you. And I would like to...
Thank you.
I would like to remind the residents of this city that National General is not a resident of the city of Southfield, does not reside in this community, and would not keep any people close on the proposal, so...
Not in this community.
And it needs to be clarified that you have a resident of this city. They will go to the council portion of our agenda.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Mr. Moss.
I would like to move the approval of Items A and B, which are the expense reports for council and now for house score.
We have a motion by Mr. Moss before the time, Mr. Frasier approves, to approve the closing form of the local, uh, item in general. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, no no. Mr. Frasier.
Madam Chair.
Uh, Mr. Moss.
Uh, oh, well, I, I want to talk about the road bond, I do have a...
Okay, we do have another item, and that's to appoint two voting delegates and an alternate to the National League of City Convention in November, during one that we like to call T R O. Mr. Frasier wants to be...
What about you, Moss? How's the best season? Mr. Cypher, me, you represent him?
We get two votes.
We get two votes.
We get two votes.
So, we have a...
I'll, I'll be the alternate.
You want?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I can report by Mr. Frasier's motion.
Sure.
Mr. Frasier's motion. Well, we have a motion by Mr. Frasier before the time, Mr. Frasier, Mr. Cypher, the voting delegates, and Mr. Moss should be the alternate delegate. All in favor?
Aye.
No opposed, or she carries, Mr. Moss.
Sure, uh, you know, lots of said about the road millage or the road bond, and I did want to address that. Uh, I was at a forum held by Delta Sigma Theta Sorority yesterday, and one of the residents did ask a little bit about this road millage, uh, this road bond that we're, we're asking voters for. Um, and I wanted to explain the history of how we've gotten to this point, because this council unanimously, um, put it on the ballot for voter consideration, because this is the, almost the only issue, uh, that we hear about on a regular basis. My first year on council, uh, when Jim Shure presented that budget, we had basically two pots for road funding, uh, and that road funding primarily came from state shared revenue, the tax dollars that you and I paid to Lansing that is supposed to come back to our local community, and one of those pots was for major roads, and one of those pots was for local roads. And that first budget, uh, we had money for major roads, we had money for local roads. That second budget that I participated in had zero dollars for local roads, and Mr. Shure explained to me that every year what we had done is we had taken, taken the oldest neighborhood in the city of Southfield, and we repaired it completely, and then the next year we would take, take the next oldest neighborhood in the city of Southfield and repair it, and so on and so forth. Well, that year, which I think was twenty twelve, uh, was the first year that we had zero dollars to repair local roads, which is a direct result of the revenue sharing not coming down to Southfield. The state, over the last ten years, has slashed six billion dollars of state shared revenues to local communities. Um, twenty-one point nine of it has been here in the city of Southfield. There's been a consistent defunding of local communities and things we can do to repair the roads. So, the opportunity came for the state legislature to come up with a long-term fix to road funding here in the state of Michigan. It went to the House, it went through the Senate. One chamber passed it, the other chamber had the opportunity to vote on the bill that would have provided a long-term fix, and instead decided to go on a one-hundred-day vacation, hunting this issue to perhaps length up, which is the session that's held after the election, before the next legislature takes place, perhaps next year. Uh, it really has left the locals in a very problematic situation where they could have passed road funding in Lansing to make a consistent or viable formula, uh, but instead has, has pushed the issue down the road, uh, no pun intended. So, as a result, seventy-five local communities and counties are going for a road millage and for a road bond. So, anybody who wants to blame the management of our road funding on the city of Southfield also has to blame seventy-five local communities and counties. We are not alone. We are not mismanaging funding. I'm going to read some of the cities and counties that are also going to their voters to, to ask for extra dollars for road funding. Counties, Eden County, LaPirre County, Midling County, Oshego County, Ottawa County. Cities, Royal Oak and Hartington Hills, our neighbors, suffering the same road issues. Meltondale, Coldwater, Fraser, Penfield Township, Adrian Township, Chesney, Tecumseh, I'm not going to name all seventy-five, but these are communities across the state that have suffered from state cuts to local communities and have caused us to have to go to our voters. So, if anybody comes to our council meeting, or anybody talks to you about this road funding that Southfield could have found money somewhere else, or could have done something differently to repair our roads, you know, that's not only not true, but seventy-five other communities in our state are suffering from the same problems. Mismanagement in Lansing that has really caused, uh, hurt, uh, back at home. Um, so, I, there's no secret, I've been canvassing the city of Southfield, uh, this past summer, uh, and it's the one issue that consistently across the board I heard from residents. We want to see our tax dollars work. We want to see our tax dollars go to tangible things that we can see it paid for. So, we're asking the voters, you know, do you want to see your roads repaired, and are you willing to, to pay for it? Uh, we asked that question in May of two thousand and eleven to our voters regards to public safety. If you wanted to pay extra, uh, to, to really create a safe and thriving community, eighty-three percent of the residents in May of two thousand and eleven voted for that. Here are the tangible results. We are at a seven-year low in crime in the city of Southfield, and I talked to our police chief, it looks like we're about to go into the eighth year. So, past this prologue, I'm hopeful that the residents want to see their roads fixed, are willing to go with this bond measure, and hopefully the city of Southfield, uh, with a track record of success, will repair local roads i- in our community. Um, so, I'm voting yes on it, though, because I want to see our roads be prepared, and I implore every Southfield resident to do the same, but the question really is in your hands. You know, if you're, if you're satisfied with the roads, don't vote for the proposal. I'm not satisfied with the roads, though, and I think the vast majority of Southfield residents are getting sick of the games in Lansing, and we have to take matters into our own hands, along with seventy-five other communities. And one thing that is critical is, and, and perhaps Mr. Sorin can even go further with this, if Lansing comes up with a fix and we're able to use those state dollars, we're not going all the way with the bond. We are not double penalizing our residents whatsoever. If the money from the state comes down, we are going to use that money to fix our roads. Um, so, there's a little bit more information, um, but I, I'm passionate about this road issue, uh, and, and think that this is, this is the best situation. We're, we're, we're up against the wall, along with communities across this state, uh, and this option, uh, for our residents is there, uh, and if we take it, we'll have better roads, and if we don't, it's only, it's not even more of the same, it's more of worse, because the roads are only going to continue to deteriorate. So, I hope to add a little bit of truth, um, to, to some of the road issues that we're, we're facing here in Southfield.
Thank you, Mr. Moss, and thank you, O.T.K. I did it very well, it's a very critical issue for the residents of the city and making sure that our city looks good, making sure that our roads are not to a point that they're destroying their retarded rights, like that we need our roads repaired. Um, then just how do I...
I, uh, would just, I agree with Mr. Moss, uh, and interesting, uh, it's totally a shame, though, that the state has not assured its communities so that communities can have a turnaround, um, and are right on, far up on, uh, in order to take care of, um, revenues that, that the state should be sharing all along. Um, uh, as you know, um, the state has, has had a surplus this year, and the surplus has come on the back of municipal government and school districts. Uh, the only other thing I wanted to add about the road, uh, you know, which certainly I'm supporting it, is that, um, our civil engineers tell us that they're not, uh, the, the roads are, um, not going to get better. Matter of fact, they're going to get more expensive to repair. Uh, if we don't repair them, then they'll have to be replaced, which means that it'll cost us all even more money. Um, so, it, it, uh, it really is up to the public, but we, I think, I speak for the whole council that we felt that, that to do nothing was not, um, the answer, so we, we put this forward, um, and we'll, uh, we'll await the vote on November fourth. Yesterday, I just wanted to make a, a very brief report, um, on, uh, Sunday, um, a week ago, uh, we had our third Southfield Dead Century Modern Architecture Tour, and, uh, it went extremely well. Matter of fact, uh, we had to add a second bus, so we sold out, uh, with eighty persons attending, and very interesting, people came from, uh, very, various points all over Michigan. It wasn't, um, there were several people on the bus, but also Lansing, DuWitt, Dan Arder, Westland, uh, East Detroit, uh, or East Pointe, uh, uh, and a number of other places. I was really pleased that people from the state and Star Preservation Office, um, also attended. Uh, we'll be, um, certainly be doing this again. Thank you.
Um, Mr. Frasier.
Yes, uh, I also agree with, uh, my colleagues on, on the, uh, road funding, uh, but there's one thing I'd like to go a couple steps beyond, uh, what was already brought to the table, and that is, uh, one of the, the, uh, areas of funding for, uh, the roads is the gas tax, and Lansing has refused to raise the gas tax. Uh, Michigan's gas tax is lower than the surrounding states, and they refuse to raise the gas tax because they just won't. Secondly, uh, the other piece of funding that we get from, uh, our tour of roads is from the federal government, and the, uh, the Federal Transportation Fund is broke, and, uh, I have, I never read it, but it tonight, I have, uh, if you go into the, uh, Congressional Budget Office website, there's a, a thread out showing how the, the funding is no longer available in the Federal, uh, Transportation Fund, and for the past several years, they've been borrowing from other budgets to fund that, but those other budgets are running dry, too. So, we're not getting help from Washington, we're not getting help from Lansing. If we're going to fix the roads, we're going, we're asking the people, will you help us fix our roads that are causing tire rot failures, uh, wheels being bent, uh, flat tires, uh, and, uh, the cost, I believe, is about nine dollars a month for the average home, which is low over a hundred dollars a year if we use the total fund. Uh, as, uh, Mr. Moss said, if Lansing does come to a census and, and funds it, we won't, we won't use all of that money, but it's there as an event that no one else will, uh, fund the road like they have in the past. So, I'm encouraging people to vote yes. I'm, I'm voting yes. Ted told you about it full-time, I'm voting yes. Um, also, the other... Also, the other piece is, I attended the Michigan Municipal Lake Convention this past week and it was one of the best ones I've ever attended. There was an excellent session on public art and I brought some information home that I can share with the council on how about going about starting the public art, getting it going and what public art means. And I was surprised that there were some ideas that the presenter came up with that we hadn't thought about, that I will be willing to share with the council. Also, the sense of place was another large portion of the convention and making a walkable area, which is something that we're working on. I have some more information to that, I will share with the council. One of the things that was not surprising, but comforting to know is the number of microbreweries that are springing up all around the state and the conference was in Marquette and there are three microbreweries in the city of Marquette. So, the question I ask is, when will the saturation point come with too many microbreweries in one community? And the answer I got from more than one person was, we haven't reached it yet, so we don't know. Because with microbreweries, each one has their own brand of beer that they keep changing all the time. So, when you go to three different, when you go to three different microbreweries, you're dealing with three different products. So, it's, at this point in time, they're not saturated yet and I think we ought to have microbreweries as well.
Years ago, the city of Detroit had hundreds of breweries, 150 years ago, all the German beer makers.
Yes. So, thanks.
All right. Mr. Frasier.
That's your other thing, those who are already voting for the bond issue and also advise those who have yet to vote, to vote yes. And we've seen another example of this this evening and when the dairy corporation is locating here in Southfield, $30 million investment, that if you go by the service drive today, you'll see where the mark came off the road. The new companies are looking for us to improve the infrastructure before they come in and much like our residents do. And indeed, we're getting results. We've been able to save federal home, borrowing someone else, the lemon model is being improved. And you see it also in the residential because there's an average of 13% value increase in our residential across the board. And so, it does pay to improve our infrastructure and keep the city up to speed. And as we'll say, it's a fair deal and stuff, that if we've spent the money wisely, we get a legally turned, don't we do?
Any other council person to move to the emergency portion?
Thank you. Council members, I, as you're aware, we do frequently with the flooding and flooding in our city and we're also impacted by it. And you also are aware that FEMA came in and inspected and has, we have the firm members of how our city was impacted. And I'd like to bring forth, right now, Bill Johnson, who is our emergency, Homeland Security Emergency Repairness Director. And he's going to provide an update for the public, for the council at this time. Thank you.
Madam Chair, House of Body, Mayor Wex. Curiously, FEMA has been working here in the city of Southfield. We have a representative that has been hired at the city of Southfield and on Friday, we get Friday reports from FEMA. We have 1,062 residents that have applied application to FEMA. On that 1,062, we have been approved, the resident individual assistance has been approved $576,000 as a total. The deadline cutoff is November 24th, so we anticipate that number could rise, but currently, $576,000 has been approved for our city residents. There's still a lot of help that needs to be done. We have also submitted public assistance for the city of Southfield for our infrastructure in our response, cost recovery for our Public Works Department with the debris rule. So, we have a representative to work with right now to try to recruit some of the costs that the city spent in the debris rule. On November 4th, FEMA will have two hazard mitigation and we see hazard outreach teams working in the city of Southfield from November 4th to November 18th. One in Lowe's and Telegraph 12 Mile, and one at Home Depot and South Hill Road just north of 12 Mile. And they'll be working from Friday to Wednesday from 9:00 to 7:00, so close on Thursdays. Six days a week, they're going to be working with the residents, showing them all various hang, hanging mitigation to prevent this from happening again in their homes. And the last thing I really want to push is that anybody that is not registered, you need to register before November 24th. It's very easy, it's a simple process. wwwdisasterassistance.gov or 1-800-621-FEMA. One thing I can say for sure, if you don't register, you will not be funded.
Okay, so the process began is to register first and then you can qualify for the assistance that's designated for the city.
No, no. You have to register with FEMA. They will send out an inspector, they use this for two to three days, they will have somebody come to your residence, they will walk through the process with you and the average has been three to five prisoners there and they're getting some type of assistance in their hand.
Well, again, John, can you give us the date again, the deadline date for the website?
The deadline is November 24th and wwwdisasterassistance.gov and the phone number is 1-800-621-FEMA.
Okay. And if, Matt, just for a moment, Mr. Doran, can we make sure that this gets out to the public via cable and even with community relations to people who are not currently with the deadlines? Is that the case? Back there, but I still?
I want you to know that we have had this on cable fifteen. We have been sending it out in our dispatch to residents on our email address. And so, we're doing everything we can, this is another way. And I want to compliment our city administrator, Mr. Doran, who's been working very closely with our, with Mr. Johnson, Homeland Security Emergency Director, and that we have had, it's been a very long process, but this is one time the federal government has really kept it going and worked. And the money is coming in once they make an application and there is an inspection for that.
Yes, ma'am.
The check is coming within?
Three to five days.
Yeah. So, it is, it's extremely important for everyone who's been impacted and please take advantage of the, how to prepare your home zones if this ever happens again, how to prevent as much damage as possible. So, that's, say again where that's going to be?
That's going to be at Lowe's and the Home Depot in Southfield, Telegraph 12 Mile at the Lowe's and Southfield Road north of 12 Mile at the Home Depot. And that's going to be very important. They're going to walk you through out of the checkouts and sewer, out of the period of violence to so that this doesn't happen again. So, we're teaching mitigation techniques from FEMA and we will have bigger representatives in two weeks to do with your home for the both of those locations.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Johnson, before we leave, I just want to say to council that we make appointments for different departments and it's really, we really need the leadership of professionals and the residents to help you see the quality of the people that has been appointed. And I just want to say publicly to Bill Johnson that he has, he has done, that we care of how he has, you know, when I've gone to a home and I walked in the door, they knew him already, they were, he had made him comfortable, you know, sometimes he, in this situation, he has been actually in the home of our residents and he has had to be very professional and encouraging. So, I just want to say thank you for the work you've done and please residents take advantage of his training on how to, you know, build a house and everything. Thank you so much. It's very good. And, Madam Chair, I do want to bring forth an issue. We are now going to the construction of the road in Evergreen. Our traffic light timing is way out of sync. You can literally sit at the, the traffic lights are coming out by the library for a few like five minutes and there's absolutely no traffic and it's all night long and it's best to be a traffic. And because you, we're literally creating a backup for traffic by the lift of that light, is that there is traffic coming off of our cameras to warn that?
I will relay that information to our project team. The actual timing of the light, we have gone to open the county road commission, has their responsibility for the timing of the light. I know there were some requests made for civil, when I were looking at Civic Center, we seem to have the same problem on the northerly light going into the library that we had at Civic Center a while back. I know it was discussed at last Thursday's meeting. What I don't know is when it's going to be tweeted and I will find that out, get a broadcast email out to the council on that.
Can you make them also flashing after certain time? Yeah, certain time.
The other thing I remind us young public that the lease time and in Southfield, we break our lease and put them in bags and I don't, you know, I've had that fight for a number of years. I don't know why we can't put them to the curb because I've done it. Where in Southfield, we have to put them in a bag and know that it runs through November 30th. Every year, I get that panic call the first week of December, they're not picking up our lease. So, please know that the last day that's scheduled, November 30th, 2014, for your lease, and we'll be saying that. The last thing I would like to ask through the chair is that can we get an update on animal control in our city, what is the status of that, the purpose, what is the volume of work? In that report, I'm still saying that our deer herd is getting larger inside and in our herd. I mean, our deer are really big deer, they're not little baby deer and the herds are getting bigger. And that non-traditional places like running across Southfield Road and Mount Vernon, I mean a full rack, no weather column, above, I guess, is running across Southfield Road and, you know, that's very concerning. And not that I don't like eating up all my plants, but it's, I, I just, you know, what do we do? How are we going to? So, that's what I have to think. I actually did a progress, probably about two, six months ago, because in the area that I live in, the deer are really beginning to take over and some of my neighbors are very upset with those deer that's been in the area. We, and as the city attorney, we see what other communities are doing, if it means, you know, allowing the, the, those individuals to shoot loads, loads to give them a, maybe a huge, a huge, or either ship them up north, I don't know, a deer, I think two weeks ago up north, didn't see a bug, I guess, and they're all down here. And this board is just seeing what we can do to really control the deer population. And I know we are being, being great, but it really is a safety issue.
I know that this was looked at with Mr. Sherratt probably a year, year and a half ago and, you know, some of those options, you can work with the DNR, they can establish some of those programs, those temporary programs. I know there are other, other state areas where they're doing something with feed, to put like a road control type thing in the feed to try to reduce the population, at least from expanding. So, there are those options. I am not aware of a transport type of thing per se where somebody, you know, catches them and takes them up north. I've not heard of that.
I know we've seen that.
Right, right. So, I think there probably are no great solutions, but I know it was looked at and we can take another look at it. So, what are the options on it? Is there no longer trade in the air?
No, there aren't, yeah. No, thank you. I'm just going to ask a question, I know it's late at night, but I've never seen a deer, hawked, or cat, look at the body. Of course. I've never seen one in the city and we have, I just wonder where do they go?
I saw one over by Beechwood, a few weeks ago, and it's, yeah.
Well, no, that's a real deer.
Our Public Works people pick them up.
Oh, okay, that's why we target them.
So, I've seen them do it and we actually keep them logged when people call in with, unfortunately, other animal artists and they do go out, pick it up and do that on an almost daily basis.
Really?
Thank you. You too. Okay. All right, we'll move to the emergency portion of the agenda. You will be able to talk.
Thank you, Madam President. I have before you tonight an ordinance which was reviewed with council at your study session on October 6th. In essence, this ordinance would adopt the Michigan Motor Carrier Safety Act, which is a part of the state law. The benefit to then incorporating these sections into the city code would be that when our officers write these violations, a lot of them would be equipment violations, licensing type violations for these motor carriers, that the revenues then would be, it would endure back to the city as opposed to going to the state. It's my understanding at the October 6th meeting that council was in support of this and I have brought it this evening for formal approval and introduction if council is, so I'm.
I move.
For.
We have motion by Mr. Favers, supported by Mr. Frasier, to adopt the amended ordinance for the Southfield Motor Carrier Safety Code. Are you in favor?
Aye.
The opposed motion, carry Mr. Frasier.
Madam President, I move that we introduce ordinance number 16.
Thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
No, motion by Mr. Frasier, supported by Mr. Frasier, you can see more to introduce ordinance, whatever you want. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
The opposed motion, carry.
Madam President, the second item I have, the discussion of labor relations, and I ask that you defer this till the end of the meeting and we can go into closed session again with council. Is that okay?
Okay. And I, in turn, the, the administrators, the portion of the agenda, Mr. Frasier.
Thank you. Tomorrow night at 6:00 PM, we will be hosting a town hall meeting to discuss the $99 million on bond proposal. I want to thank council for your statements earlier. I would like to add that this is the only plan that really speaks to our residential or subdivision streets, the Virginias, the Stamosas, the Forest Woods, the Bain Ridge Streets. And we can't count on the feds to deal with that, can't count on the state of Michigan. I think, you know, think about it, Councilman Frasier had made comment that the Federal Highway Trust Administration wrote, if you recall that, you know, three by lips, they forced that gas tax, it was one of the items that led to the demise of then former President Bush. The road issue in Michigan has been an issue since Jim Blanger, so for years, this road issue has been, the buck has been passed. This governor, our current governor of Michigan has asked for a $1.5 billion gas tax and fee increase. If that money were to come about, that would bring in another 4.5. Our plan really calls for investing almost $10 billion a year and as the audience will hear tomorrow night.
hear tomorrow night, with that level of investment, we can take our roads from, on floor average, into a good rating over a 10-year period. And that's what this is really about, protecting the value of our homes, communicating to our business community that we're going to take care of our infrastructure. So, I welcome people to join us tomorrow at 6:00 PM, council chambers.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is Esther.
Thank you. And before I, on the seventh side, I just want to remind everyone that on Tuesday, November 4th, there will be a general election held in the city of Southfield. The polls will be open from 7 o'clock in the morning until 8 o'clock at night. Saturday, November 3rd, we will be open to the public to issue acid voter ballots. Our office hours will be 9:00 to 2:00 PM. And then Monday, November 3rd, is the last day, and anyone can apply for an acid voter ballot. However, the ballots cannot leave the building on that day, and you can only obtain a ballot up to 4:00 PM on that day. Anything after that is a third emergency. On the next page before you is an amendment to two ordinances that were adopted by your out of the body, the electronic test, electronic test, test ordinance, and also the natural lawn ordinance. In the process of updating the codified year code, we discovered that duplicate numbers were given to these two ordinances, and we're asking that council, not the ordinance, not the contest, but we're just updating the ordinance, the numbers with them, so we can see with our qualifications.
So, move. Word.
We have a, do we want to take, you want to go ahead and give the ordinance, the number 1632, and then we enact that ordinance?
Yes, 1632 will be for the electronic test, that ordinance, and then 1533, 1533 will be for natural law.
So, do you want to hand me the, the package?
Yeah, I would move the change of the ordinance numbers, and then agree with that, Claire.
I have a question. Don't we have to approve the issue first? Would you say motion?
I remember.
I know that. But in order to change the numbers, don't we have to approve the fact that we're going to change the numbers, and then give them...
And then assign the numbers. That's correct. Yeah, it's really, again, a two-step process.
All right, we have a motion by Mr. Cyrus, supported by Mr. Fraser, to approve the change in the ordinance numbers. Submit, Mr. Johnson, that we all pay.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Mr. Fraser.
Do we need a new motion?
A motion, yeah.
And that ordinance, 1632.
Madam President, I move that we introduce ordinance number 1632, and...
We need a support.
Yeah.
We have a motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Cyrus, to introduce ordinance 1632.
And that it be introduced and enacted as an emergency ordinance.
We have a motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Cyrus, to introduce and act and introduce an act every time. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Mr. Fraser.
And I move that we introduce ordinance number 1633 as a, would have, regulation of natural lawns as an emergency, and enacted as an emergency ordinance.
We have a motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Cyrus, to give an ordinance 1633 and enact 1633 as an emergency ordinance. Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Mr. Fraser. We will be to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The council recalls, on April 28, 2014, you adopted a 180-day moratorium with regard to exterior lighting to accent buildings and architectural features. That moratorium is set to expire on October 25, 2014. We have tentatively have a meeting with the Legislative Committee this Friday, in order for us to review this with the Legislative Committee, bring it to council, and go through the planning commission process, we're asking for a 120-day extension through February 25, 2015.
I'd so move the extension of a 120-day extension of the moratorium with regard to architectural lighting.
Word.
We have a motion by Mr. Cyrus, supported by Mr. Fraser. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Mr. Fraser.
Madam President, I move that we enact ordinance number 1630, establishing the Public Arts Commission.
We have a motion by Mr. Fraser, supported by Mr. Cyrus, to act 1630, which is the establishment of the Public Arts Commission. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, Mr. Fraser.
Can I make a comment? Sure. I've had a number of inquiries from the public regarding applying for the Public Arts Commission, that is officially established. And in speaking with Ms. Banks the other day, the application for boards and commissions is on the website, the city website, you go under Boards and Commissions, and you'll pull down, you'll find the application. This is a working commission, is intended to be a working commission, with a strong background in art, not just being an art lover, but someone who has some related art experience. And I suggested that you take that on your application and letter of interest. Thank you.
All right, we'll entertain a motion.
So, move.
We have a motion by Mr. Cyrus, supported by Mr. Fraser. Now, it needs to be a roll call of the board and the session, Ms. Banks.
Mr. Cyrus?
Yes.
Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Fraser?
Yes.
Mr. Dorff?
Yes.